Welcome, this is the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. We're starting at about 7:11 on February 3rd, 2015. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. Okay.
Okay. New business. We have revolving hours from our last meeting, the deposit for 34 East Main Street, and the deposit for 3 Farm Lane, which will be next month, which I have here to distribute. And revolving hours from the last, I didn't finish typing any explanation, from the last meeting. And that includes window too, if I end up staying. So we're, amount spent to date close to what we took in. So we spent $23.54 and we took in $24, so we're ahead a little, and that's pretty good with the laptop being purchased. Okay, the next one, and this is, I didn't get to change it here, here is the correct. There is an invoice for WB Mason for all four ink cartridges and envelopes to do a letters list. And what happened was, you'll see the bill underneath, and then I got a credit $43.99 because envelopes that I bought were defective. So the motion needs to be for...
1976.
11976.
So I moved with the board approved warrant, the amount of 11976, we paid WB Mason for supplies, ink and envelopes, recount 11762. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes I emailed on 114, I put them in the packet because we're still having that hearing tonight, so they're in there. And I did not put the business minutes in there because they were in the email, so I normally don't put them in because if anybody has an issue, they usually email me. But I did put Duncan in there in case we needed them for tonight. So I need a motion for business and hearing minutes of 1515 and Sharon...
Do we even know the hearing's still open? We do, right?
Yep.
Like to make a motion or approve the minutes from...
Business and hearing?
Business and hearing.
Business and hearing meetings from, whatever the date was.
16.
16, 2015.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed, none.
And before is the disclosure forms, and that's just, so you guys have them.
Oh, good.
That's, I did them in a separate packet, so you can take them out and keep them with you. It's interesting because I was talking to Mary Ellen, who's the new assistant to Howard, and she told me about this, when you go on the State Ethics site, is this, on the first page, it says, "Call the Attorney of the Day."
Yep.
So if you have like a question, and maybe we don't want to boil the town council, they actually will give you the advice, is this, do you think this is a financial conflict? Is this an appearance of a conflict? And those are the two disclosure forms I gave you. There's like two pages of different kinds of disclosure forms on the website. So I just gave you the two. The ones, the one we've used in the past is just the one that's, it says, "Appearance of favoritism or influence," we've used that one. The other one is a financial interest, which, when you read the instructions, would have to be approved by the appointing authority, which is the selectmen, so they'd have to know the month before so that they can put it on their agenda and say that you could participate or you couldn't participate.
Patty, if we were to call the Attorney of the Day, would, would that, there wouldn't be a cost incurred to the town, number one. Number two, would couple them in a page, town attorneys be on the same page with them?
It's, you're calling the Ethics Commission, so I would...
Should be, then.
I would think, I can check with Mike, because I meant to show him this, but I haven't had time.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to assume that, but I wouldn't want to be, you know, positive on it, you know, unless you can get a definitive answer.
Let me check with Mike, and I'll send you guys an email.
But this is only for state-related ethics questions?
Yeah, I mean, if you have a question on this, like, this financial disclosure form, the instructions under financial interest. It says, "Financial interest must be direct and immediate or reasonably foreseeable," and not remote, speculative, or not, I mean, it goes into, so, but if you did, when you did the online, and I did my online certificates, which you guys already did, it kind of went into it a little bit, but there might be a gray area, at least I thought there was a gray area, of if your financial is director, you know what I mean? So it might be a question like that, can you explain that to me a little better? That's something I would call...
I mean, it's a great idea, you know, if it saves the town money.
Right, so I will ask Mike Farrell about that.
But the fact that they bring it up is, instead of calling town council, they say, "Call Attorney of the Day," that's the only thing that threw me on the whole thing.
Right. Okay, so those, I did separately, so you can just pull them out and put them in...
Yeah, nice job on that, Patty, thank you. I already spent $4 on ink, but that's okay.
I told you I'd bring them with me. Anything that I send like this, I will always bring hot coffee.
I skim over and print. I don't read much.
You skim it and print it. Okay.
Correspondence.
Okay. I had a deny a letter that didn't make it in here, but it's not coming to us anyway.
There's one in here.
There's one here for 34.
More in length.
That's, yeah, that's...
That's planning.
Did I attach it? Yeah, I just picked it up because, that's, John said not to worry about that, that's the planning thing, because it's not in the official town map. The general correspondence, I got this from Mary Ellen in the planning office, and this is for when we have a hearing, for example, the one tonight, 34 East Main Street, if that were to be granted, it doesn't mean, that does deny a letter, that it would need to go before the planning board for site plan approval. So if we happen to put any conditions on that, this is to just let you know what planning covers. And Jeff responded with an email that I didn't get last week because we were closed, but I sent it out today. And so Jeff had some comments on that, that we just need to be careful and ward something like, if you're going to put a fence up, and then ward it, placement to be determined by the planning board at site plan approval.
Yeah, with the details.
Like with the Wichita...
There's certain things that the board may find necessary in order to mitigate any detrimental conditions. Can't grant the special department order variance unless there aren't any detrimental conditions, or they can be, or there is no detriment, or it can be conditions to mitigate the detriment. So certain things may be necessary, and the board needs to delineate that those are necessary, but the specifics of those, it needs to be clear, I think, in any decision that we write, that the details of those to be worked out in the site plan. That's where we got into a little bit of a wording issue on one of the previous...
A little bit of an overlap there.
Well, we weren't clear enough, but then, you know, so the planning board was trying to work out the details of a fence, but anyway.
Right.
I think that's the key.
That makes sense.
We can't leave it out. I mean, they would maybe like to just have us leave it out and let them deal with it, but if it's necessary, it's necessary, I mean, to say that.
Yep.
If it's for noise or for whatever.
I agree, it's great to bring it up and let them make the final call, it's in their jurisdiction.
Do I have six signatures on that? One, two, three, four, only a five.
Did you need mine too?
To Sean's.
As an associate member, okay.
Oh, everybody, yep.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, you're, you sign everything.
I wasn't sure either.
Okay, the next...
Don't listen to me, man.
We have to talk about the town people, no? The new application. So I kind of put them in order. I recycled a couple of the envelopes, so, because, I mean, if you want to keep the envelopes signed, if you don't really think you need them, then give them back to me at the end of the meetings, and I can, so I don't have to order more of those.
Keep throwing them away, it's a good idea.
Yeah. I'll just try and write smaller on them.
Thank you.
And I have everybody's certificates for the State Ethics Commission. I don't know if you have anybody, if you want to ask anybody in the audience if there's anything, 48 Hours, if anybody has anything about business that they need to speak about.
Is anybody in the audience here to talk about anything that has to do with the zoning board business meeting? Business?
Oh, not business.
Okay. Okay.
That's it? That's all I have, if you have any other questions. Close, right? Close business.
You want to close it?
Unless you have something...
Do we have anything else to talk about?
The only thing I got that came from this was asking Mike about the Attorney of the Day. Right, anyone?
I'm good.
We'll set that we close the business meeting for February 3rd.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Let me just see if Kathy can, who wants to take a res-life test, that's something that's...
We can't, no.
Huh?
This one we can't.
Yeah. Good evening, this is the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals. We originally had two hearings tonight. One was continued from last month, 64 to 74 East Main Street. We'd like to take that one first, it should be pretty quick, if that's okay with you, Mr. Olson?
No problem.
Thank you. Come on up. Do you want to read the legal ad now? Okay.
How long can I read it again?
Do I have to open it?
Yeah, you do.
Can you read the legal ad again?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So do I just open the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to open the hearing for 64 to 74 East Main Street, continued from January 6th, 2015. To introduce the members, we have Sharon Freeman, Associate Member Sean Dean, Paul Schillen, Dave Kaptus, Jeff Moore, and I'm Gina Tebow.
Good evening, Madam Chair, other members of the board.
I need to recuse myself as Lena Butter.
Yes. Legal ad again, so bear with me for just a moment. Legal ad for the Town of Georgetown, Zoning Board of Appeals for 64, 74 East Main Street. An application has been made by Constantine Escravanos, trustee Mirar Realty Trust, 3 Plough Ave, authorizing mass 01864. He's the owner applicant of 64 to 74 East Main Street, formerly known as the Georgetown Plaza. Georgetown, Mass. 01833, in the R.A. District, and identified on assessors map 11A, lot 85. The applicant requires an amendment to the Zoning Board of Appeals Water Resource Special Permit, ZVA File Number 15-01, granted to the applicant in August of 2014. This application is being held pursuant to Master and Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and Chapter 165, Article 5, Sections 29 to 38 of the Georgetown zoning bylaws. Specifically, Chapter 32D requires a special permit from the ZVA for any use other than a single-family dwelling with a sewage flow as determined by Title 5 of the State Environmental Code, exceeding 110 gallons per day per 10,000 square foot of lot area. Although the proposal includes no proposed work other than the septic system upgrade, along with associated improvements, the proposed septic system upgrade design of approximately 4,600 gallons per day exceeds the 110 gallons per day per 10,000 square feet of lot area limit. This is ZVA File Number 15-05. Okay?
Do we want to read this then?
That's his presentation.
Okay, that's why I was...
Yeah.
You're up.
For the record, John Smolak, attorney for the applicant, Mr. Realty Trust. With me is Chris Barages of Williams &amp; Sparrages, our project engineer. As the board may recall from our last meeting, the board had requested we identify and other items to be included as part of the filed site plan. And so, what we'd like to do is have Chris walk you through those changes to the plan. The board also requested that we meet with the owners of 60 East Main Street to discuss tree placement along the common boundary, and that has happened as well, and the comments that we received are incorporated into the plan set that we've submitted.
And just for the record, I met with the...
Joseph Foles.
Joseph Foles, and she has a copy of this letter and of the revised plan, and I told her to contact me if she had any problems, and she has not. So she was very happy with the meeting.
Great.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, again for the record, Chris Barages from the Engineering and Survey Office of Williams &amp; Sparrages. And attorney Smolak mentioned there are several items that the Zoning Board of Appeals suggested we look into after the last hearing. They included questions about which trees, and whether or not trees needed to come down right along the property line. When you have a tree that straddles the property line, you have two ownerships, and really the property owners need to get together. So Beckham, January 19th, I went out and met with Cindy and Rick, and walked the property line, and we identified the trees to be, the trees that are on the property line to be removed. And there were three trees located along the property line at this location, and then another tree at this location here, and we flagged them on a little worksheet for them. And after doing that, we walked along their yard in the backyard, looking in that direction, seeing where they had these little gaps. And we had done a pretty good job locating vegetation trees and shrubs along the property line here, which I showed on the revised site plan. And it was, it's not, there's no surprise that where we had gaps in our plan is where there are gaps in the ground. And so we identified areas where we'd like, Joseph Foles would like us to plant some additional trees. And so we're showing three additional white pines at this location here, a fourth white pine here, a cluster of tree trees here, and then another red maple in the back, for a total of eight street tree-sized trees that are going to be average height six to eight feet. What you would typically see in a subdivision roadway planted at the end of the project, that's sort of size. We included plantings for both evergreen and deciduous trees on the plan. We also walked to verify that the, what the size of the existing fence is, and how long it runs along their property line towards East Main. And we did verify that it was an eight-foot-high fence to a point, which then reduced to a six-foot-high fence, and it ends, it ends in this general vicinity, right here. And so Cindy and Rick requested that we replace that fence with a similar fence, an eight-foot-high fence, the entire length, and then to add one more eight-foot section to hide a little bit more of the proposed wall on the property line here. And so we're proposing to replace that existing eight-foot-high fence along that entire length, and we show where that is on the revised site plan. We've also, we identified an area that was to be landscaped in front of the short retaining wall along East Main Street. It's a proposed perennial planting bed. And we have several notes on the plan that describe that the proposed retaining wall will have a textured surface along East Main Street and along the parking lot of the 60, 40, 74 East Main. We're to specific notes with a little bit more detail in our note section, and I'll just read that note. The proposed concrete retaining wall, the new septic system will utilize a concrete form liner to provide a textured wall service on the wall facing East Main Street and the parking lot in Georgetown Plaza. Surface will consist of a cut stone, brick, or rock face. We also took a look to see if, if one of the suggestions that was made was, was to propose some concrete on the surface of the ground or pavement in the area of the proposed tank, the tanks for the new septic system. And at this time, we'd like to move forward with the ZVA plan proposing no change to that area. We're proposing to leave a gravel. When it comes time to file a notice of intent with the conservation commission, we will ask them to pave that section. We're just not sure if it's going to be allowed, and so for the purposes of our filing before the ZVA, we'd like to leave it off the plan this time. We thought, we think it's a good idea as well, and we'll try to, we'll try to do our best when it comes time to file our notice of intent. when it comes time to file our notice of intent. Just make sure I didn't miss anything here. And the only other item that we added to the plan was a fence detail for the eight-foot-high stockade fence in this area here. That concludes my presentation of the plan changes since our last meeting. Thanks all of you. Of course, I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
She's aware.
Okay. One of the one.
Good catch, Sharon.
All our viewers are going to be disappointed.
They could probably still be. That usually happens.
Do we have any questions from the audience? Nope.
It's existing to remain?
The question I was going to ask, and I think we might have answered it. There is a notation that there is a six-foot existing stockade fence just below removing existing carport. That's existing to remain?
So this fence over here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's an existing fence on their property.
Existing to remain. And there currently is an eight-foot fence there?
Along the property line. That's correct, along the property line.
Yes, I was just, on the fence, whose fence is it going to be?
So the fence is going to be on the property of Mr. Escravanos, on Mr. Realty Trust.
Okay, so he'll be responsible for maintaining it?
That's correct.
Okay. It's shown on your side of the property line, his side of the property line, I guess.
The only other question I had was, with the new trees that are being planted, will be, are they going to be a hundred percent on sixty-four, seventy-four East Main? Or are they going to be kind of split? And who's going to maintain? So these, as it states, well, they're going to be maintaining trimmed so they don't just bloom out.
Right, so we're going to plant them. We've identified the approximate location of what we said to reconcile that we'll work with them during construction. But they are going to be completely on the property of sixty East Main Street. And so, they're going to be owned.
Be owned by them. But it's going to be maintained?
They'll be maintained by them as well. The important thing to them is that we plant them. And they'll be trimmed appropriately at the time that they're planted. I believe there's a note about pruning on our detail there.
Prunage field directed by owner to improve appearance, retain normal tree shape. But that will be on sixty.
We're going to do that at the time of planting.
Pardon me?
We're going to plant the trees.
You'll do the planting.
And we're going to, and we'll prune them at that time.
On a regular basis?
No, no.
Right, they want them to.
Gotcha.
To take off, for sure.
Any other questions from the board?
Top of wall is eighty-four? Is that right, elevation eighty-four?
Let's see here.
It's up at the top is where it says eighty-four. It ties into the top of the wall.
Right, at that location, the top of the wall starts to drop off and almost meet the existing grade. So at that location, the top of the wall is elevation eighty-four. But as you head back towards the street, the top of the wall elevation is approximately eighty-seven as we approach.
Okay, great, thank you. About three feet high? About seventy-seven. It's only a foot and a half by the road there.
On the road, it's not going to be that high. And then we come up between four and five feet along the parking lot and along the side here. And it's similar on the side of the property owners at sixty East Main. But it comes very close to the street grade out front.
All the questions I have?
I asked the audience. You guys are, any board discussion?
I think it's a well-thought-out alternative to the problems that they've got over there. So it addresses a lot of the issues that we're trying to deal with. And they did a good job to mitigate some things we were concerned about. So it's a pretty good job.
I would agree. They did meet my concerns. If everybody's good, I have a motion.
Actually, you want to mark? Can we mark these first? It's right on the mo. Because the water shed in the same site there, A and B, I did these A one, A two, A three.
I moved that the board grant the application an amendment to previous decision, ZBA File Number fifteen dash zero one, Exhibit three, for a special permit in the Water Resource District for sixty-four, seventy-four East Main Street to Constantine G. Escravanos, trustee Mirre Realty Trust, three plus ab, North Reading, Massachusetts, zero one eight six four, the owner applicant of sixty-four, seventy-four East Main Street, formerly Georgetown Plaza. Georgetown, Mass. Based on the application and supporting materials being a letter dated January twenty-two, two thousand and fifteen, Exhibit A two, describing the modifications on the plan submitted by the applicant, along with testimony of the applicant, the public, and deliberations, the board found the applicant has proven that the proposed septic system as shown on Exhibit A one, Revised one twenty fifteen, modified from January one, two thousand and fifteen hearing, presented at the hearings, will not result in a degradation or potential degradation of any groundwater and of any surface water resources providing water supply to the town, including potential water supply to the town or any other town, namely Newbury, Rowley, or Groveland as provided under the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Article five, Section thirty-five. I further move that the board find that pursuant to one sixty-five dash seventy-nine, A through D, that the proposed septic system is essential or desirable to public convenience or welfare, will not overload any public water or any other municipal systems so as to unduly subject any areas to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare, will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, and will not cause an excess of particular use which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. Accordingly, the board approves this amendment to special permit decision subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall install the landscaping fence and other improvements substantially as shown on the plan entitled Site Plan in Georgetown, Mass. Showing Septic System Expansion, sixty-four to seventy-four East Main Street, dated November twenty, two thousand and fourteen, Revised January twenty, two thousand and fifteen, attached as Exhibit A one with attached letter dated one twenty-two fifteen that describes changes on plan and discussions with Director Butter, marked Exhibit A two. Number two, the project is subject to approvals for the septic system by the Georgetown Board of Health and for work within wetlands, resources areas by the Georgetown Conservation Commission. Except as modified herein in the Water Resources Special Permit Decision dated August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, and recorded with the Essex South District Registry of Deeds in Book thirty-three, six-nine-four, Page eighty, marked as Exhibit three, shall remain in full force and effect.
Is there a second?
I think so.
A second there.
Any board discussion? All those, it's not a roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, good job.
We have a motion closing hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You have somebody?
I wasn't sure if you had to suspend the meeting or not.
Paul, you want to read the legal?
Legal, sure.
That's the big one.
I'm starting to get all choked up. I'll let you know. I have that, thank you.
How'd you do?
Is that the same?
Everybody said. Okay, I'd like to open the hearing for the thirty-four East Main Street. The Board of Appeals will conduct the meeting according to rules laid out in Chapter forty-eight of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure. A copy which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. I'd like to introduce the board members. Sharon Freeman, Sean Dean, Paul Schillen, Dave Kapnis, Jeff Moore, and I'm Gina Tebow. If you'd like to read the legal ad, please.
Sure. The public hearing will be held on February third, two thousand and fifteen, at seven thirty PM at the Georgetown Town Hall, Third Floor Meeting Room for an application filed by applicant Alan E. Olson and Maureen Olson of two oh one Pond Street, Georgetown, Mass. For the property located at thirty-four East Main Street, Georgetown, Mass. Assessors map eleven A, lot one eighteen in the RA Zone to convert the existing structure at thirty-four East Main into an apartment house. The applicant requires a use variance under Mass. General Law forty-eight, Section ten, and the Georgetown zoning bylaw, Chapter one sixty-five dash eighty-four. As a proposal, as the proposal exceeds the required ten thousand square feet in lot area per dwelling unit, any number of dwellings in excess of two requires a variance from footnote number one of the Georgetown Table A four, Intensity of Use Schedule. The footnote states ten thousand square feet per unit. For the first two units, ten thousand square feet per unit thereafter. All the required area shall consist of continuous building area as defined in Chapter one sixty-five dash seven. The applicant requires a variance as a proposal includes a change in the existing non-conforming lot. The lot is non-conforming with respect to lot frontage. Any change in the lot configuration further reducing the existing frontage requires a variance from footnote number one of Table A four, Intensity of Use, and pursuant in Mass. General Law forty-eight, Section ten, the State Zoning Code and the Georgetown Zoning Bylaw, Chapter one sixty-five dash eighty-four. The applicant also requires a special permit pursuant of Mass. General Law forty-eight, Section six and nine, and Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Sections nine, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty-nine, and ninety-four. As a proposed apartment house is only allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals as outlined in Table A three, Use Regulation Schedule of the Georgetown Zoning Bylaws.
One other thing I didn't know is that Sean is an associate member. The five members voting will be the rest of us. So you can go ahead.
Well, if I can, I'd like to introduce Shauna. She's my attorney, our general counsel. And Kathy, my associate, who kind of puts everything together. There's a lot of faces going around. I mean, nobody's seen the faces yet. I'd like to thank the members of the board. I'd like to thank you very much for your time. As I'm well aware, this is a volunteer job. And I appreciate it. And good thing we didn't have snow. And I also want to thank you for your patience. I was delivering letters and stuff like that for you. I didn't think bringing, trying to bring in a cast of thousands of all my neighbors and a few friends I might have, you know, to fill a room. But I wanted to give you a sense of what we're seeing and what we're feeling in the community and really reaching out, just find out the desire to have this go forward or not go forward. I think we did it once with an open house because people asked, and asked, and asked to come in and see it. And then we went forward and we sent out letters to the three hundred people within the three hundred, the same identical list that you do too, and just ask if they would like to support the thing. So that's what I did. I don't have any huge plans for this. I made these up today. I don't know if you want to start out with the lot, the lot line there? But where you would like to start? As you know, from what you just read, the zoning, the apartment multi-family is allowed use within that area. And it's up to your board to make the decision whether to allow it or not. The various, really is that one, other than the lot sizes that are grandfathered, I would say, is that one thing and that's in the zoning. Way, way back in the little pages, about ten thousand square feet for a lot. I mean, per residents. Oddly enough, if you tip anybody down that district there and tried to have them even convert it to a two-family, in our case, ten units, we'd probably have to own the land all the way from thirty-four East Main Street to the bank. Because it'd be about two and a half acres. So it really doesn't fit within that zoning. But that's what is in our zoning right now. That ten thousand, thousand-foot thing. So I bought this. My intention is to make money. I have to make a living like everybody else. But I've got a real affection for old properties. And I really, truly do. I've done it professionally. I work on old properties and I like them. I bought this property with nothing, no particular thing in mind except that it was rundown and it was a disaster. I saw that. The sign was out like everybody else. I saw it. I took it, made a deal, and I bought the property. And then I just started thinking what we were going to do with it after we cleared the trees away. And picked up all the paint that was all over the ground. And this is what we've come up with. We think that housing is a necessary item there. The historic properties, which is the whole property, but this here piece here and this barn in the back are the most historically significant pieces of the property. How does one take and maintain that so it doesn't end up like that again? You know, it's very expensive. It's going to cost an awful lot of money just to get that thing in shape and then maintain it. With the apartments, condo type of situation, at least there's money to keep paying and maintaining the facade that we all look at in town, that we see every day. And so, I'm asking that you would approve the use of ten apartments in there. That's what makes economic sense for that. They're one-bedroom apartments. The other thing that I have in here is a little park that we've asked to put in here, a little tiny pocket park, twelve by twelve. The idea is that, and that's a change of the, I haven't got the right term, but it's a change of frontage, I guess.
It's a change in frontage.
Actually, it's an increase in frontage, I was told, rather than a decrease. But it will go right in the corner here. That's something we wanted to do that had nothing to do with this whole scheme of things, but this is the place to ask about it. That twelve by twelve park will be, we want to annex it off of this property so that it doesn't burden, burden them. But it'll be open to the public to be able, to be able to go in and sit down. A granite, a granite bench, granite chairs, maybe check a, you know, check a table on it, and a fence and granite around it. So, it's, it isolates it. So, if somebody going by wants to sit, or just in the summer wants to just sit under a cool tree for a second for one reason or another, um, they can stop in. So, I think those are the three things that we, that we're asking for.
Right, although we're asking for the u, the intensity of use with regard to the frontage, we're actually increasing the frontage with that park. And the increase of frontage actually provides us with enough frontage for it. However, because it's only one area, um, it doesn't provide the exact amount of frontage that's necessary. However, we are increasing the frontage with that, and it can, the, the park can only be in that one area because it's the only area that's accessible via, um, a public way. And all the other, the other three sides of the property is surrounded by public way. And so, you would have to go upon private property in order to get to the park in any other area. However, because it's right by the sidewalk, it's on a public way, and anyone can, um, get to that park that way. Um, with regard to the special permit, we do not think it will take away from the area, which is, um, labeled as single family. It will actually increase the area, given the fact that this is a decrepit building that is at the verge of being torn down. And by the, given the fact that we are renovating it, it's going to increase the area, actually. And lastly, with the intensity of use with regard to, um, the ten thousand square foot per unit, case law does allow that you can grant a use variance when there is, it, when it is cost prohibitive to do anything else. If we were to renovate this property to make it a single family, would cost millions of dollars and no, it, it would, it's cost prohibitive. No one would buy it, no one would do it. The only way to actually renovate this building, giving the state it's in, giving its historic nature and keeping the historic nature, because it has been deemed a historic property in Georgetown, is to make it into condos or apartments. It's, it's the only way to save the structure. Any other way is cost prohibitive.
Not millions though.
I mean.
Like close.
Can I, I don't fully understand how that park increases the frontage. Can you just?
You know what, we never, the, the idea of the park wasn't to increase any frontage or do anything with it. Um, that, I think the building inspector's one.
But that's okay.
The one, the building inspector's one said, I think you're increasing the frontage.
But can you explain how that is?
Sure.
I don't really understand.
Um, he explained, it was actually his idea. Um, with that, I said it was the only place to put it, and he said, well, you're actually incre, increasing this, the frontage because you're making, um, you're, the park is going to be public way. You're increasing the frontage by the size of the park.
It's twelve, twelve feet.
By the square footage of the park.
No, what he's saying is that, that eleven and a half foot section of the park that runs parallel to the property line, he's gonna count that in as additional frontage because it's a public way.
I see.
I'd have to look that up.
That's the building inspector who said that.
Well, Madam Shannon?
Still doesn't conform, so it doesn't.
It, it, it's almost a trivia statement of what went on, but he had, you know, made that comment.
Just in speaking to the building inspector and the selectman, the, it's a donation, so we can't, you really can't do anything with that because that would have to go through the selectman and then go to town meeting. So, it's, it's there, but you can't really.
We can't base our decision on it.
Right.
Okay, understood. Okay.
Well, it, uh, no, that's right. The don, yeah.
Right.
The variance still applies, whether or without the park. That, that variance still applies.
Right. I understand, thank you.
Could you, uh, could you just continue with your presentation and telling us roughly? How, I know we've been looking at where, how the units work. How many units per building, is that all right? Can I ask? Like, it's a.
Yeah, because it's still under, I think, presentation. You really didn't go through.
Yeah, I was wondering about the parking as well.
No, I don't, I, I, um, I don't have any elaborate presentation. Why, I'll be frank with you, my notes are, I just wrote down those three. I'd rather just respond to you as, as you go. I think Shauna wanted to.
Will you?
So, I mean, I'm ready to, I just read it, my presentation is whatever you'd want to hear or know about.
Okay, can you go through the units?
It's ten, ten one-bedroom units.
And.
So, your question was you wanted to see it, to get an idea.
Roughly how many square feet are each of the units?
They'll vary, they're about, about seven hundred fifty square feet.
And they're all one-bedroom?
They're all one-bedroom.
And the ones in the barn, they have a loft, is that the bedroom in the loft?
Well, the loft, I was asked about that today. The word loft, I don't want to, um, get overly, have you been out? The, um, to get the loft for a second, you've got two floors in the barn, and the barn is being divided in half. There are some loft, there are some lofts up there, some small lofts up, up there right now. And those are gonna be in the, in the, in the room. So, you'll, you'll be in the room, in the loft right there. You're really, you're just part of the room.
It'd be more like an open floor plan with a loft, like they do in the city, like loft, loft apartments in the city.
So, that's what the lofts are, it's just, um, you just thought it was a nice addition, I mean, to have that sort of thing. So, that's what, what the lofts are.
Yeah, we got, we got no court. Can we read the, um, so, well, are we down to the presentation? Or we're in the board?
It's gonna take a while, I'm not my trigger.
So, can we just read the cover letter? And, because the cover letter goes through everybody who's signed.
On that, on the, we'll have the second note, the second sticky. That only applies to those letters. Those letters that all state the same thing.
So, why don't, go ahead.
Yeah. The other ones are all separate.
This is separate?
Yep, separate. That just came today from Mr. Bussing.
Do we have these? While we sort this out?
No, I had, I.
Okay, that's parts and rec.
Do you want me to start having someone hand these?
Sure. I have a second set.
Can Shauna read, Jeff?
Sure.
I have a second set.
Sure. We got a lot, so.
Right now?
Everybody's gonna start now?
Just go ahead.
Someone can start.
I'll start. Uh, this is, uh, new correspondence addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals from the Georgetown Park and Recreation Commission regarding the Pocket Park at thirty-four East Main Street, dated January seventh, two thousand fifteen, sent by.
Oh boy. Jim Demento.
Thank you, Jim Demento of Georgetown Park and Recreation. Uh, dear members, Alan Alson approached the Georgetown Park and Recreation with a vision of installing a Pocket Park, Pocket Park at thirty-four East Main Street. He expressed his hopes that it would allow people to be able to sit in the space and further foster a quote pedestrian-friendly atmosphere in the town of Georgetown. The Park and Recreation Department has had many discussions on this quote pedestrian-friendly issue as well. We had envisioned a more elaborate sitting place at the Harry Merch Park until it was determined that the historical commission would not allow it. Therefore, we have looked at the possibility of putting sitting areas at the Old Town Square at Elm Street and in front of the Napa Auto Parts Store. There have been just the, mm, this is, sorry, this is how it is written. There have been just ideas, and they are not in our immediate scope of work. I would like to offer my opinion that the town has done a reasonable job at increasing the quote walkability of the town. I've been in town since nineteen sixty-two, and it is still a safe place to walk. However, there are not a lot of public places for people to conjugate for a brief five-minute talk or to get out of the weather during a five-minute rain shower. This Pocket Park could be a, this type of place. As you all know, a lot of towns are losing businesses and many town centers are bare. We have an advantage in this regard if we can structure the center of town to be friendly to pedestrians. It will never be as good as your report, but we need to continue to improve this aspect of the downtown. The Park and Rec reviewed the, his plans and thought it was a great idea. We voted unanimous to give our full support to this concept, respectfully yours. Pardon me, J, J, Jim Demento? I can't read his signature. Jim Demento of the Georgetown Park and Rec.
Okay, we have new correspondence. It's not dated, it's date stamped, however, received February third, two thousand fifteen. To whom it may concern, I'm a builder from Georgetown, Massachusetts. I live at one sixty West Main Street. In the past several years, I've built thirteen houses in the Georgetown area with an average of four bedrooms each. Most of these houses were sold to couples with no children. I feel that there's a need for one-bedroom units in Georgetown, and it appears that families are much smaller these days. I urge you to support Alan Alson's project because I feel that it would be an asset to the community. Yours truly, James Bussing.
Uh, this is a correspondence from Peter Durkey, dated December twenty-second. Patty, it's, it's addressed to Patty. Um, why does there have to be a second driveway? Where the second driveway would go, you would have to remove a town tree.
That was just when I get new applications. Every department gets ones, and that was, I sent it to Peter electronically, and that was his question. He was going to try and be here, but obviously, maybe cutting snowbanks down, but, so.
Okay.
He couldn't be here.
Pardon me? Sure. This is from Frederick C. Detwiler, the architect and preservation planner. Uh, caption, Benjen Adams House, three oh two Central Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts, New England Landmarks. Uh, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, dear sirs, madams, I am writing in support of the project for thirty-four East Main Street in Georgetown for reuse as a multiple-unit housing. As professional preservationist, I have worked with Alan Alson to design a compatible residential, residential use for the historically significant Dunbar Hotel slash Tavern. Not only was the building originally used as a residential hotel from the time of its original construction by Robert Savory, uh, eighteen-ten, but it was continually used commercially as a hotel and tavern by James T. Dunbar from the eighteen-forties to the eighteen-seventies. Finally, in recent years, from the C.A. nineteen-thirties to the nineteen-eighties, the property was used commercially by CB, CB Hills Colonial Reproductions and by others until within about the last ten years, after which the property stood vacant and derelict. It is very important to preserve for future generations the old Dunbar Hotel Tavern, a significant historic resource in Georgetown. Regards, uh, Frederick C. Detwiler.
Uh, dated December nineteenth, twenty-fourteen, uh, this is from Sean McGee, Chairman of the Georgetown Affordable Housing Task Force. Uh, dear chairperson, as the Affordable Housing Task Force, we are charged with developing opportunities for affordable housing in Georgetown that will qualify for inclusion in subsidized, subsidized housing inventory. This focus is based on the findings in town approved by Georgetown Housing Product Plan, which found that families of lower income are not well-served by current Georgetown housing stock. Further, we feel that the central location of thirty-four East Main Street property would add, would aid revitalization of the downtown as well as satisfying ongoing affordable housing needs. In line with this mission, Mr. Alan Alson, owner of thirty-four East Main Street, has approached us on numerous occasions to discuss the development of all or part of this property as affordable housing. We have made several inspections of the property prior to and during renovations that have been undertaken by Mr. Alson. During the most recent meeting with Mr. Alson, he has shown willing to work with the town in developing affordable housing units. Based on all of our previous meetings, review of the proposed development plans and the work done to date, we can support the project with this caveat condition that Mr. Alson commit to allowing the Affordable Housing Task Trust solely or in partnership with a nonprofit affordable housing development company to purchase all or some of the units constructed to be resold or rented as affordable housing units. Affordable housing units defined as one that qualifies for inclusion in subsidized housing inventory. The purchase price for these affordable housing units shall be for an amount based on the fair market value of the properties predicated on the sale value to an independent, uh, disinterested party. These affordable housing units shall be in excess of any units that will be required under the town inclusionary zoning bylaw. We also respectfully request that the variance in special permit, if granted, be conditioned to include this caveat condition. Our interest is in making sure that the Affordable Housing Trust and/or other entity dedicated to providing affordable housing will not be precluded from purchasing any or all of the available market-rate units from Mr. Alson or any other entity that may become involved. Uh, what is being proposed would create the type of housing needed in Georgetown, providing young families and senior citizens the opportunity to buy market-rate units at a price well below the average selling price of other types of properties, and allow the town to purchase units that can be resold or rented with the necessary restrictions to allow for their inclusion in subsidized housing inventory. We are available to be present during the hearings regarding this matter if you feel it would be of value. Thank you for your time and consideration. Best regards, uh, Sean McGee, Chairman.
May I, may I see that letter?
Paul, you wanna grab one of these? The next one. Shall I? Yeah, go ahead, I need a break.
Georgetown Historic Commission Position Statement on Rehabilitation Project at Thirty-four East Main Street. Dear Mr. Alson, this letter is in response to your request of the Georgetown Historical Commission at its December seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, meeting to issue a position statement regarding your proposed rehabilitation in the use of thirty-four East Main Street property, historically known as the Dunbar Tavern, that you and your wife Maureen recently purchased. For that purpose, the GHC is pleased to note that after hearing how you plan to rehabilitate and use the property, the GHC voted its unanimous approval to your project at its two thousand seven, two, uh, excuse me, twelve seventeen, two thousand fourteen, regular open meeting. It's important to note here, however, that this approval is based largely on your stated goal that regardless of the changes that are necessary to accommodate its ultimate internal use, your intent is to rehabilitate its, this historic property so it maintains its original eighteen-hundreds external appearance. So, the GHC, GHC's approval is based on the meeting that stated, with, uh, on a meeting that stated objective. The town is indeed fortunate to have, oh, unfortunate that by your purchase and plans to rehabilitate it, in this way, you have saved one of its early and culturally significant historical, historic properties from what appeared to be its certain and eventual fate having to be demolished. Saving it in its original physical appearance is important since it is one of the few properties of this vintage in this area of East Main Street that was not consumed by the great fires in this area in the mid to late eighteen hundreds. In addition, the, the thirty-four East Main Street property located near what is now the center of the one hundred-plus property historic, property historic area, which per the town's June two thousand seven master plan is designated as our town's historic downtown district. In fact, the plan for this area as proposed in that master plan is to have this downtown area become one of our initial historic districts. All of the one hundred historic properties in this downtown or, or village district area are now being, or have already been surveyed for inclusion in the state's Massachusetts Cultural Information System Database. Uh, finally, it is the George, the GHC's hope that as you meet with the various town boards to acquire the permits you may need to achieve whatever internal uses you finally decide upon, those involved will, uh, will find a way to accommodate your overall goals without seriously impacting on your goal to preserve the external look of this historic property, which fits so well with the other eighteen-hundred-plus properties which populate this East Main Street downtown historic district area. Hopefully, the above comments meet the intent of your quest and, in addition, clearly indicate the conditions under the, under which the Georgetown Historic Commission supports your rehabilitation project for its property. Sincerely, Joseph Knapp.
Can you read this one? Okay, this letter is from the Georgetown Historical Commission dated January twelfth, two thousand fifteen, to Mr. Alson regarding historical status of thirty-four East Main Street property. Dear Mr. Alson, this letter is in response to your request of the Georgetown Historical Commission at its December seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, meeting to provide a formal statement regarding the historical status of the property at thirty-four East Main Street that you and your wife Maureen recently purchased. As you already know from your research and that of the preservationist slash planner working with you on this project, it was built around eighteen-ten. Therefore, on the basis of its age alone, it easily qualifies as a historical property under the guidelines of the Massachusetts Historical Commission. As established for those properties, that it should be on file with the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System Database. In addition, this specific property was selected by the local GHC and properly surveyed, surveyed for inclusion in the MHC's McCris database in nineteen ninety, both on the basis of its age and on the basis of other written historical records relating to its significance to the town of Georgetown as the Dunbar Tavern. So, on the basis of the GHC's MHC granted powers to select and declare properties that are historic in our town, your thirty-four East Main Street property is officially recognized by both the MHC and the GHC as a historic and culturally significant property in the town of Georgetown. Its status as such is further amplified by the fact that it appears highlighted and designated as property number fifteen, Dunbar Tavern, on the, on the March two thousand seven issue of the town's official historic, uh, and cultural sites map. Hopefully, the foregoing information based on our historical records satisfies your request regarding the historical status of this property, property. Sincerely, Joseph, Joseph W. Knapp. P.S., as the official organization responsible for looking after all things historic in our town, the GHC would like to take this opportunity to thank you on behalf of the town for coming to the rescue of this historic building. Prior to your purchase, it was basically an abandoned state, in an abandoned state, and as such, without any ongoing maintenance, was rapidly deteriorating to the point potentially facing eventual and certain demolition. By your purchase, and especially your decision to restore its exterior to the former and original state, we're helping to. or helping to preserve an important historical asset in one of the most historic areas of our town.
Okay, um, got a couple more here. Uh, petition to the Board of Selectment, zoning board, uh, planning board. Please act favorably on the reuse of this property to help preserve the historic home, thirty-four East Main Street. Signed by, uh, three or four pages of people that I'm not going to actually read through all the names, but signed by the number of people, uh, doesn't say anything about the project, but identifies the address. Uh, another letter dated January thirtieth, twenty-fifteen, from, uh, Shawna Jamal, is it Jamal?
Yes.
Sorry. Dear Ms. Tebow, the purpose of this letter is to state that Alan Olson requested from the town of Georgetown Assessor's Office to certify a butters list of all residents within three hundred feet from the above rest, uh, referenced project in order to send out letters requesting support for the ongoing project. Those letters were mailed on January ninth, twenty-fifteen. Please find copies attached. Uh, listed below are those residents who sent letters of support. Um, and there are eleven, uh, uh, residences listed here that all sent letters of support, uh, and the letters are included here.
That was the cover letter.
And this was the cover letter that, uh, went out seeking, um, those letters of support. So I'm not going to necessarily read through that, although... Yeah, maybe I will. Because it's going to either describe or not describe the project in full, so... Uh, the, the letter that went out seeking letters of support dated January ninth, twenty-fifteen. Would this go to Georgetown Lane? Well, this is an example letter. My name is Alan Olson and I recently purchased thirty-four East Main Street, the Dunbar Tavern. As you may have noticed, we have cleaned up the outside and stabilized this historic structure. The next phase is to go to the Town Zoning Board of Appeals, from whom uh, you should have received an official notice of the hearing scheduled for February third, twenty-fifteen, at seven-thirty P.M. It is my intention to save this historic building and barn and to remove the dilapidated, uh, connect or, and, and/or barn shed and in its place put up new construction that will complement the existing historic building. This will create ten one-bedroom condominiums. If you believe, as many have stated, that this is about, it is about time something was done to this property and that its improvement will be an asset to the town and your property, then I would ask you for your support in the form of a simple letter to the Appeals Board enclosed or one of your own. Please sign and return to me in the enclosed self-addressed stamped envelope and I will deliver to the assistant at the Appeals Board as they need all letters in two weeks prior to the hearing. Should you like to attend to show your support, the hearing is scheduled for February third, twenty-fifteen, at seven-thirty P.M. in Town Hall. Thank you for your support, Alan and Maureen Olson. And there are, as I mentioned, letters of support in here from eleven different residences.
Now, those are, excuse me, Jeff, those are from butters?
These are from eleven, uh, butters.
They're all within the three hundred-foot zone. Many of them are from right next door.
How many in total, how many in total in the three hundred-foot zone were sent out?
I'm going to say thirty. I don't think that's the right number. It's under forty. It's not, um, so the butters are there, uh, most importantly, um, the Harold Rota, who's a butter really on, on two sides there, because we know it's probably in the back.
Forty-three, excuse me.
And, um, the other is, the other are people from the condo, the twelve-unit condo right next door. Um, Charlie Rollins is the president of the condo, although it's an individual letter and there are some others from there. So, and the other a butter is the bank, who I've had plenty of conversation with them at different times, but just because of the size of the corporation they are, there's not a lot of... So there's no, nothing negative in the plus. We didn't, just for the record, um, we didn't receive any letters telling us, you know, no. And, um, I didn't hear that.
I just wanted you to finish your sentence.
And that's, that's what we got. We had some undeliverable. That's what we got back. I read you the cover letter, so we said, if you'd like, you hear.
There were three undeliverable.
Yes, I got the same.
Okay, so I can tell that the audience has some questions. When you come up, please come up to the stand, um, give your name and address, so Patty can write it down, and please address all questions directly to the board.
Okay.
If we still have questions about the project, do we hold them until after? Okay.
Whoever wants to go first.
I'm Mary Hubbard. I'm one of the butters in the condo.
Your address?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
Thirty East Main Street.
Thank you.
I'm property owner there. I got the, I think that restoring the building is a lovely idea, um, but I don't think that every lovely idea, um, should have a means that supports it. Um, I know that this would have a direct impact on my quality of life. My bedroom will about, my bedroom window abouts the proposed development. It's going to be a huge amount of potential noise. I think in no, who knows what's, what the project is? There was a letter saying, do you want to preserve the building? Of course. Do you want something better than the decrepit building? Of course. But ten units, are there any plans where the parking lot going to be? How much traffic is there going to be?
Um, there is, and we can get to that. That's kind of why I wanted you guys to touch on that earlier, but we'll, we'll get back to that.
So I think people in a general term, sure, if you said, would you like to preserve a building down the street? Of course I would, but it doesn't impact me. So I can be in favor of things that don't impact me, that's great. But just the fact that it costs a lot of money or somebody needs to make money on something doesn't mean that it's necessarily, I mean, should we all be able to do whatever we want? Because something might be a worthy project or we want to make money doing something. I think that more significantly is the impact that it will have on people about it.
Do you want to take this moment to show the parking plan?
Yeah, I don't, we didn't, um, we don't have a, we don't have an official site plan because it isn't...
But you have a drawing.
I have enough to tell you exactly. The, um, this, this, this area in here is the open land. This is, we're, we're hoping to keep parking away from the front as much as we can, just so there's more green, green space. There's, there's parking all through it in this area right here. This is where the septic system is also going, which is, by the way, approved by the, by the Board of Health.
So is that oriented, I'm sorry, where is that oriented? So that will directly about the condo next door?
It absolutely.
So the parking lot will be abutting the condo?
Yes, it will.
Okay. That's the area of concern.
The, anyways, this, you know, that's what, I think that's the answer to your question. Septic's here. There's, um, there's packing the conceptual plan we did for, for a site.
Yeah, it's, I did remember seeing it. I'm just, I'm struggling trying to find it. Do you have a large board of the one where you showed the extent of the paving?
No, I, you know what? Because it's just a conceptual, it was just a conceptual plan.
Okay.
I have, I have a, I have a...
You should, I think you're doing it.
Has this been presented to people? Do people know about this or have they just talked about the concept?
Excuse me, would you mind addressing it to us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I get it. I understand.
I mean, do the people in the condo know that the parking is going to be done? Will, will be a driveway going back and forth?
I don't believe that plans were shown.
Then no, it's a separate, it's a separate, it's a separate, it's a planning board. It's the planning board and it's a site review. And that's when we're talking about site review, we're talking about parking and any else, that's, that's, as I understand it, that's, I'm, I'm here for one thing and it's the site review.
But as far as a, a butters being in support of it, they saw no plans. Or even conceptual plans.
No, I didn't send plans out. I, I must have done more sets of plans around town than anybody could imagine. And they have been, you know, they've been over there for, when I had open house, people could see them. Um, there's no hidden agenda. The, the land is on that side. That's, that's where it is. That's where the, that's where the septic is and that's where parking is. Town, the town asked for twenty, and it really does relate to this in a way. The town asked for twenty spots, two per unit.
Correct.
That's exactly how I feel about it. But we have, we have enough for twenty, fit and fine. Um, when I go to the site review, I'm going to ask them to not have twenty, because I don't think that's... But I mean, even the condos next door, small condos over there, I have to assume that they have fifteen or sixteen, twenty parking spaces over there as well. I'm going to think that I have one free unit, but I don't know that.
We can answer that question because I'm on the board of that condo association.
Do you want to stand up and give your name and make sure you address the board? I know it's difficult.
My name is Cassandra White. I live at thirty East Main Street. I am actually unit one, which on this particular drawing is the first floor right here. My bedroom window looks out here. My living room window looks out here. So I just want to give you the perspective of how it's going to affect me personally. We, in our condo association, we have a double lot. So we have an entire empty lot and our parking is there. And it faces businesses and a business building a block behind it. And the driveway of the house, the original house, is also parking, which happens to be the parking for my particular unit assigned to me. Some units have only one slot, some units have two slots. But we have a total of twelve units and I believe there are four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen slots and two visitor slots. So I guess my concern is that twenty cars in there and driving back and forth. And in, in a lot that's half the size of what we have, it's going to be just a parking lot, the whole, the whole lot thing. It just sounds like it's going to be one big parking lot and, and...
I share your concern.
Yeah, you know, so even ten cars seems like it's even, I just personally, I think ten units in that whole building at seven hundred square feet seems very tiny. I mean, we've got twice the size and we've got twelve units. And some of ours are eight or nine hundred, some of ours, we've got one that's only two hundred and fifty square feet, which I personally think is too small to be called a unit. And, and I feel like that's too many units for that space and, and, and... Yeah, I, I understand that you have to make money on this and stuff and you have to recoup what you're going to be putting into it, but I'm thinking about this whole thing just being a building and a whole paved lot. And, and I look out, I look, my bedroom looks right out on that what's going to exist as the parking lot and cars driving in all the time, plowing at three o'clock in the morning when we have snowstorms. That's going to impact me severely and anybody that sits on that side of the house. So, you know, I, I'm concerned about that. I, I'm, I'm glad somebody bought it and wants to do something with it, but I, I just, I, I want to know how it can, we can lessen the impact on us, you know, for that on a personal level.
Quick question. I didn't catch your name. I'm sorry.
Cassandra White.
Cassandra, thank you. You have condo units, the thirty East Main Street condo?
Which is on that side.
Individually owned units, right?
Yes.
Okay, and primarily owner occupied?
I am, yes.
That's all I want to know. Thanks.
But that's my big question of parking.
Thank you.
I mean, that's a huge quality of life thing. It's enormous. I mean, I think it's all well and good to preserve historic buildings. I think that it's well and good to take on projects, but to say that you have to do this to justify making money or to support the exterior of the building and maintain it when you're saying, all right, you're putting a driveway with twenty parking spaces and cars, a new driveway, come and pass your bedroom. I mean, that's a lot of traffic. It's a lot of noise. Think about trying to sleep in the summertime with your window open. What the noise would be like. It's, it's a quality of life thing. And I think that everybody that offers support, of course, we all want to see historic buildings maintained. Everybody wanted something done with that building, but nobody had any concrete plans. And maybe people anecdotally walked over, maybe there are blueprints all over town, but it, nothing was presented formally and I bet half of the people that offered support don't have a fixed idea of the driveway going there or where the parking lot is or actually what's going on. It, it's a great concept, but people don't know necessarily the specifics that they're supporting.
If I can, Mr. Chairman. I, I can understand any concerns they have and everything, but I don't think they should interject what they think the rest of the people that are signing support letters are doing. That's inappropriate. They don't know anything or anything else.
I have a quick question. Are either of you two ladies who spoke and signed in officially, are you on the list?
Of supported?
Yes. No, the petition that was first submitted to us.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question of the two people who spoke? So, um, I, I know the bylaw, I believe it's the bylaw, is the, the one that says that it must be two spaces per unit, so that's the town bylaw. What I'm trying to understand is, is it the number of units being proposed or that units are being proposed? Is it that it's ten units and the feeling is too much, which is my impression from Cassandra?
Have you been to that lot? How do you fit twenty cars in there?
I'd like to focus on the units because, because the number of cars per unit is, is, is part of, that's the Georgetown requirement as it stands now, and I presume site planning review would be the only ones who could reduce that. What I'm trying to understand is it the number of units or the fact that units are going in?
It's the number.
The number of units.
Volume and the num, volume of people.
Is that true of your neighbor?
Sure, I mean, if somebody wanted to do a specific amount, however much the land would support, whether it's... That would be appropriate.
Okay, so it's the number of units.
And the other thing is additional drive that we have the traffic going back and forth.
Which again would be predicated by the number of units that are approved, given that two cars, so that's sort of beyond...
On an ideal level, it would be better to put parking on the other side of the house than the bank is, because nobody lives at the bank.
I understand what you're saying.
You know, sleep there and people coming in and out on that side of the house would be, wouldn't really impact anybody, but on this side of the house it does.
But as a concept of it having units is not just so...
And the other, I don't know, is it going to be an apartment or someone renting or is this going to be a condo association? We haven't got that either. I had a letter, letter said condo and then listing apartments and there's...
That's actually one of the questions I was going to ask.
Well, I believe, I believe that the reason it was written as apartments, because that's the proper way of assessing what it is. If you notice, I started right off with the condo, the word condo in the beginning, because it's always been condo. But I believe it's being addressed as, as apartments, because that's, I believe, the proper way for us to address the multifamily unit.
On the application, those are the only options. So they're not going to be rental units. They're going to be purchased. Correct. They are, however, given you've got your, your bylaws, that's the only way we could write it. Okay.
And however, also...
I will tell you, at a public meeting on tape, sitting in this, there, I was talking to the, to the Housing Task Force and they talked about, I actually asked if they wanted to buy the property. And one of the things they were throwing around is apartments, apartments, apartments. And I made a statement to them right there, sitting in your seat where you are right now. I said, if you think you're going to make apartments downtown, because I live in this town too, that's a very inappropriate place for them and I won't sell it to you for that. I, I made that bold a statement, sitting right there at a public meeting. I don't, I, I think it's inappropriate down there.
Okay, I also want to get to all the other people that would like to speak. I know this gentleman in the back.
Can I wrap up one other thing? Um, Cassandra, when you were, when you came to the open house and, and, did you, did you go through? When Cassandra came to the open house, I would hope she would have asked questions about what was going on. There was pictures and, and plans of concept we talked about over there. And when you signed the petition, it doesn't, this petition doesn't say anything specific at all. It just says, it says, just simply says, please act favorably on some sort of reuse and preserve in the property. And that was, I know this was, this was quite some time ago, but Cassandra was at that meeting and did sign that petition.
And she did sign it.
But I have to say, I, I was at the open house as well and you were talking bed and breakfast. There was no concept. So as far as I'm concerned, if that's the open house petition, it doesn't relate to this word.
To preserve the historic site. So the complaint about, is not, everyone wanted to preserve historic site. I think it's a little disingenuous.
No, we were only making the comment because she said she did not sign it. However, it says it right here.
Okay, all right, we need to, okay, this is not part of the meeting. Let's, let's, um, the gentleman in the back in the beige coat, please stand up. You've been raising your hand and being very patient.
May I, right before, sir, one second? Just so you, with the multifamily and apartment house, why John put apartment house in the denial? Apartment house under definition. A building arranged, intended, designed to be occupied by four or more families living independently of each other. So that's why it's a special permit for an apartment house.
Okay.
Multifamily is...
It should have a definition for like a condo association, but that's...
Step right up, introduce yourself.
I haven't signed in. Should I do that before I speak?
Yes, please.
Please.
Okay, my name is Michael DuBois. I live at thirty-seven East Main Street, which is practically directly right across the street from where Mr. Olson is doing his renovations. I also received a letter asking for support, but it was so vague that I couldn't at that time say, yes, I support what you're going to do. Because it's basically just an open statement, you know? I don't know what's going to go on there, okay? So, I mean, I sat and watched this beautiful renovation going on for months. Observed Mr. Olson over there, but I don't think anybody ever walked across the street and says, hi, how you doing? I'm Mr. Olson. This is what I'm going to be doing. So I had no idea. It's the reason why I didn't sign. My wife and I, like I said, we have a lot of concerns with, and you answered some of those questions, but it's the parking, okay? It's the amount of traffic that it's going to generate. Right now, we have a terrible time trying to get out of our driveway. There's so much congestion and traffic there now. As you all know, I think you've all lived in town a long time. You've seen how busy East Main Street has become, okay? Now, we're going to put ten condos. And as I think the bylaw said, it requires, what, two parking spaces? As these people said, twenty more cars. And I faintly, I've walked that property and twenty cars are going to be parked back there? Plus, on top of that, what about all the visitors? What about all the people that are going to be dropping by? Where are they parking? As it is now, we have, supposedly, we're supposed to have a two-hour parking limit in front of that neighborhood between the hours of eight and five, okay? There shouldn't be all-day parking. So we have a concern that what happens now, even with those parking regulations, we have people that park bookends right on our driveway. We can't get out. Now with those snowbanks with the snow we have, I mean, we take our lives in our hands trying to get out of our driveway. I'm telling you. Yes, do we want to see that renovated? Sure, we've lived there for twenty-five years. And we've seen it deteriorate. And it was nice to finally have somebody come along that wanted to do something with it. But, you know, I mean, what I've heard from these women here, I mean, I feel the same way, so I don't want to be redundant. But with us, it's not we're against the project. It's just that it's going to unpack, impact us too, we feel with the traffic particularly. And at the time, I didn't have an idea of what it was going to be. It was just sort of like, you know, have you guys signed a blank check? Hey, sign this blank check for me. And trust me, you know, I mean, what's really going to happen here? What's really going to happen here in the end? So that's from us. I just want to get that off my chest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so that, I don't know if anybody else wants to talk about the support letters and all of that. We received all this information over the last several weeks and we've all read it and we all can read exactly what it says on there. We can date it and we see when it comes in. And then we were given these plans. So I just want to let you all know that when that says that we're in support of saving a dilapidated building, we know what that means. It doesn't mean I was in receipt of these plans and I see what he's doing and I know he wants to put ten units. So, you know, we get it. I just want to put your concerns at rest because there's going to be a lot more discussion about this project and obviously, you know, all those details were not flushed out. So we can talk about that a little bit more later, but.
Ed Day Charden, I'm in the Historical Commission and the Historical Society as well. I've got to compliment Ellen for the fantastic job he's done to keep this history in town alive. And we, for a long time, a number of years, has been vacant for, God, it's got to be fifteen, twenty years or so. It's just gone steadily downhill. We expected that even though we might put a demolition delay on it, which we're authorized to do for six months, that the building would ultimately come down. So he's got a gold star from both the Historical Society and the Historical Commission for bringing it back to life. When he did come before the commission now, Ellen was still a little bit in flux. This was, you know, a couple of months ago. In terms of what the interior might consist of, how many units and, you know, that sort of thing. I know he'd like to maximize. I can't blame him for that. The number ten kind of startled me a little bit. I mean, we're talking about seven hundred square foot units. They're about, you know, the size of this little space here. And there's a bedroom, you know, you'll have a kitchenette. And it's the living quarters of the, it's a small efficiency, basically. I'd like to see a few less than the ten. That would help along with the parking issue. If they were, I don't know, I'm just throwing out the number six or eight. You wouldn't need twenty cars. You're going to be able to reduce that by a number of parking spaces. The other question I had, and I'm sure Ellen has done his homework here, is the septic system itself. Even though it's been reviewed, you're coming up with ten additional toilets and ten kitchenette units. So you're bringing in, you're producing a lot more waste and adding to the septic system substantially. Now, that might mean you'll have to have, you'll have to pump it, you know, once, twice a month or every couple of weeks or whatever it might be. And maybe he could, you'll have to work out something with the folks that'll handle that piece of it. But that was only my other issue. Other than that, I think he's done a fine job and should be complimented for that.
Ed, could I ask you a question before you sit down?
Yeah.
If you don't mind. Is that okay?
Yes.
Because it's going to come up later while you're here. I just want, are you familiar with the history of the use of that site at all? And I know Ellen is probably at this point quite familiar with it as well, but from the Historical Commission standpoint, has it always been used as a, way back when, I think it was a tavern. But the more recent history, do you have any information on what this was, how this particular lot was used?
I remember the hills, Sealy Hills, when they were there, the furniture maker, and he had the barn. I didn't realize they were taking the barn and trying to create some units out of that as well. I don't know if that could be a central meeting space for the occupants in the house or something. But I don't think it's been ever used where, you know, you've got ten units, eight, ten, six, whatever the numbers. I think there were a couple of units there.
Quick question. As a historic property, in the long term, I know at this point our town, and it's not a state property currently, is it? What I'm getting at is I know that eventually historic properties have to adhere to certain, I don't know, maintenance, color, siding, all that kind of stuff. Currently, we don't have anything like.
We don't have anything of that nature.
So there would be.
Ultimately, it is, and I think they mentioned that in the letter you got from the Historic Commission already. It will be an important part of the historic district. So we want to make sure it's, the exterior is what we're really concerned about and give him lots of credit for reviving that and bringing it back to life. But what now, it's the interior that we really have to look at and the components, whether it's the greater number of units, which increases, like I say, the septic system as well as the number of cars on the lot and that type of thing. It would be nice if some magical way we could bring it into, I don't know, eight, six or somewhere like that, that'll be a little, no, I don't know financially if he's going to be able to do that. That's something he'll have to look into.
I was more concerned about the exterior. What happens inside is certainly important, but the more people that are using that building, that ten units versus eight versus six versus three. There's a lot less wear and tear on a building in general, I would imagine. Less vehicles, less pedestrian circulation. So I, my concern would be, in the long term, if there is a historic commission, will eventually there be a list of rules that will have to be adhered to as far as maintenance to a building and that sort of thing? Is that usually what happens in historic towns?
The building itself is on the state, it's called the Macris Database. It's been surveyed and.
It's registered.
People realize that, that's right. It's been surveyed and it's certainly a great historic building and part of the town's history. So just to save it is a big plus for the town.
I think what Paul might be referring to is, you know, some towns like Newburyport, if they have a historic district.
Right.
Once you're in a district.
Then you get, then you have to have your colors approved, the type of windows.
That's what I was getting at. I was wondering if.
And Georgetown is.
We're not quite there yet. We've got two areas on Elm Street. We've got fifty-one houses. And this one where Ellen has his building, there's approximately a hundred or thereabouts. So it's a big part of the town and it's going to play an important role. Ultimately, when that occurs though, you're right, Dave, they have certain regulations on everything from color. Some of them go a little bit overboard when they tell you what color to paint your front door. But, you know, whether you want to put in skylights or do certain things that's going to detract from the architectural features of the house.
Right, the period details.
But I think that's only if the town votes to have.
It has to be voted by the town.
And we have not done that yet.
That's what we're saying. It's not, they're not there yet, but ultimately, that would be the commission's goals.
The town, the town may not agree.
Yeah, they may not want that. You're right.
I guess I just want to.
So we're not there.
That's a big, long process that'll go on for months on end, you know? You're going to find a certain segment of the community saying, you're not going to tell me what color to paint my house.
You're going to find a hundred and fifty homeowners that are going to say that at a town meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Anything else said?
Nope, that's it for my.
Thank you.
John Perkins, I'm with the Historic Commission and I want to thank Mr. Olson for starting the restoration of the property. However, I was very surprised when I heard about the ten-unit proposal. I sort of envisioned in my mind something like four to six high-end units rather than, I think, a cheaper but larger number of lower units. I think you would still come out with enough money if you made a real luxurious unit and charged a higher price, I think, in the long term. The other thing I was concerned with is how many of these units are on the ground floor, on the first floor, on the second, third floor? And that hasn't been presented. And I'm thinking more in terms of what has happened to properties in the past. We've had terrible fires in the town, as somebody mentioned, and we have to have access for fire engines to get in there. And the more units you have, the more likelihood that there might be a hazard developing. So I just think that's something that has to be considered, the accessibility of emergency vehicles. That's basically all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, these two gentlemen are from the Historical Society, which wrote a letter in favor, if I remember you read that.
Of the exterior. Now, it was very specific on the exterior. At the time that Mr. Olson came in to bring us up to date and let us know what he was doing, he hadn't developed the interior.
Right, so he hadn't come up with the idea of numbers. So you guys were, you sent this letter in favor of it without knowing.
No, we were very explicit in our letter and said the exterior of the building. And he's done a wonderful job on that. He spent a lot of money, I'm sure.
I do have another question and I'm going to address that to you. Would you mind standing back up, please? You are on the Society?
I'm on the Historic Commission.
Oh, the Commission, I'm sorry. All right.
I'm on both.
You're on both. Well, with, the architect is a member of the Society. And he's fully aware in designing ten units with, there's an optional plan of eight units, my understanding too. And you're telling me that no one was made aware of that?
I haven't seen that plan myself.
At the time, Mr. Olson hadn't defined the, what the ingredients of the interior of the building would be. We do know if you're going to use the third floor, you're going to need a second meter vigorous. So they'll have to.
Well, that would be up to building. That's really not us. But no, I just wanted to make sure, so.
I guess I just would, I hear what everyone's saying, but it seems plausible to me that someone who purchased a piece of property and restores it may not have fully vetted. I understand what everyone's saying, but I sort, I really feel like I need to state my feelings that I think in fairness, that it very well could be that it wasn't clear once they purchased the building and they rehabilitated what they were going to do. So if we could just sort of let that be. So I'm pretty clear of who wrote letters of support, when they wrote them, what they were supporting. And I feel really clear that I understand who's supporting the renovation. And I understand right now that what we're talking about is the use. And here we are, we're talking about the use. Here are the plans. I'm not at all offended that I didn't know these plans six months ago because I, I would like to give, I'm just going to presume that it wasn't clear. So if we could just let that go now.
I'm not sure I could agree with you on that because I don't believe that the plans were drawn up overnight for these units. I don't know if you've ever designed buildings?
I don't.
Have you worked with architects?
Yeah.
This is not a two-week, three-week, four-week process.
That's fair.
It takes months.
Okay.
Okay, there's a lot of work going into this.
Can I respond?
Yes.
The plans have been an ongoing thing all the way through. I'm actually surprised by some people that said they, they may not have seen them, but they've been an ongoing process all the time. As far as your board, I think every board in town, I've given them to, but I stayed away from your board and the planning board because I felt to try and tell you. I did a tour of, I mean, you name it, you know? And I didn't think it was very appropriate for me to come up here and try and do somewhat of a tour and say, here's what I'm doing, because I knew I would come to this board. So you've never received a set of, you received a set of plans at the appropriate time when we applied for the application, but. I bet you, I'll bet you I've given, I've given, I'll bet you I've given out forty sets of plans through town.
Not only that, but the letter that Ellen sent out to all the abutters on January ninth states this would create a ten-one-bedroom condominiums. The letters in support, if they read the letter that we sent, it said ten units. So all the abutters knew on January ninth that we were thinking about creating ten condos.
For the eleven that supported it.
But everyone that's.
But I, but I think the point is I wouldn't have supported it unless I saw plans. I'm an engineer by trade. I wouldn't, I would have been like, where's your plans? These plans aren't even complete as far as I'm concerned for what I would want to see as an abutter. So like Sharon said, I think we just let that go right now. We're talking about the use and the permits that you're requiring. I think, like, it's all water under the bridge at this point. Like, you have letters of support, you have people that don't support you. It's just the way it is.
Right, in anything. You're going to have supporters and people that are against it.
Poor Mary, you've been waiting.
Yes. Only information I have is the letter that mentioned the ten units. And it mentioned the possibility, I believe, I don't have the letter, of additional construction keeping in character with the.
Was that if the barn was taken down?
Yeah, there was a comment about the barn might be.
Taking the yellow.
The barn.
No, the barn stayed.
In between.
Okay.
Okay.
Roof's too low.
So I mean, if that's valid when we're talking about knowing what we're talking about, because would the Historic Commission be in favor of additional construction? Because do they know that you're talking about potentially additional construction? So I think that it is very relevant that we do know what we're talking about when we voice an opinion of it.
At this point, yes, but I don't want to go back in time anymore. We've spent a lot of time talking about that. It's now time to move forward. We're all, we all know what happened.
I mean, that's why I'm here. I mean, I'm all in favor of, when I got the letter, I was like, cool, ten units, but then I'm like, I wanted to see plans. I want to know. What the idea is. And it doesn't seem like it's really all solidified, you know? So that's why it needs to be solidified before you can figure out what's going to happen.
Agreed. A couple of you guys just came in. Do you want to sign in and speak? No?
Just observing.
Yeah, okay. Any more questions from the audience?
Let me just mention once again, when Ellen, when you got a chance to talk to us, I didn't, I don't think we saw any layouts and numbers of units. We didn't talk about that at all, as far as I, as I recall. We talked about the exterior of what you're going to work on and what you were going to do. And we got the unanimous vote of the Historic Commission, that that was terrific. So.
Okay. What's next? Questions from the board? You've been writing a lot, Jeff. Would you like to start? I think, I can start. So I think a couple of them was that it's condos, there's no rental units. I think the affordable housing said that they wanted to actually buy some of the units and that's, I just, again, to clarify. I just, again, to clarify, it's always intended to be condominiums, in the wording, it's apartment house for the bylaw, correct?
Clarify, as I said, when I sat in your chair at a public meeting, I said I wouldn't even sell it to them.
Okay, that's fair.
You have an agreement with them? Their letter states all of the units to be affordable?
You're gonna, you're gonna, there's five ways to read, five ways to read that, so I wanna be careful with how I read it, but.
Your application says nothing about including any affordable units in this project.
The one, the one affordable unit is required under the town law, by, by law. And that affordable unit has to be, um, given at the price the state sets for affordable unit.
Based on ten units, correct, one, or is it?
Yeah, one, one for every ten.
Right.
The, um, the issue of them buying additional units, I don't, I mean, if they're for sale, they're not, they're not to be. So I don't have any, I made it perfectly, I said, you know, I don't know if I wanna be giving out three, I'm not gonna commit myself to numbers. They're for sale, I, I, nothing else, I said, if it's on the market for sale, I think I'd be, uh, putting myself in a lot of jeopardy not selling to.
We can't preclude them from buying it.
Right.
So I'm not gonna disagree with them, they can buy them all tomorrow, I think.
And what's, and what's the, you know, what's the future hold in case we've got, let's say you were granted approval and you put up ten condos for sale and a year from now you sold two, uh, perhaps they would turn into a rental. And I've dealt with the affordable housing and they're still kind of at the ground floor on whether or not they can actually go ahead and buy something or they're going to support, um, and supplement somebody as a rental unit. And that's, that's where they're kind of split at this point in time too.
I agree with you about that.
So you don't know, you just, we don't know.
Well, they would be condos.
I have a higher authority that's already told me about rental units, besides my opinion and living in town and I don't think it's a good place for them. My wife has said, if you go down and think we're gonna be renting apartments, she's gonna kill me.
But not only that, they, they would be condos, whether or not they were owner occupied would be different.
I own condo units in town, I sold one, I rent one.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so they wouldn't be apartments, they would be condos, whether or not their owner occupied or not.
Exactly, they could still be rentals, so you can call it a condo, call it an apartment, if it's rent or owned, we don't know.
Just like every other condo in the town.
It would be up to the association to determine how many condos would be.
Owner occupied, correct.
Versus, correct.
What else you got there, Jeff?
Yeah, you go.
Want me to get going here?
Yeah.
Alright, here's where I am on this. Uh, yes, it's a historic building and it's terrific that you bought it and I'm thrilled that you did. And, um, you know, I'm the one who stood up a few hearings ago to make sure another building in town, very similar in location and stature of this one was not, was not demolished, so I'm absolutely thrilled to see that happening. You've done more than a terrific job of gathering support and getting everybody understood that, that there, I don't think there's anybody in town that would wanna see that building taken down, that I, that I, no one's gonna stand up here tonight, including myself, to say that they'd rather see that demolished and turned into something new and modern, that's, uh, that's great. The reason you're here is for a use variance and historical significance of the building, although it is part of the character of the building, really has very little to do with the justification for the variance. And quite frankly, um, I haven't heard any justification for the use variance yet. It's an extremely difficult threshold to meet. It has to be related to the soil conditions, the shape, the topography of the lot, not the size of the lot, not the historical significance of the building. Your application doesn't really touch on any of those things and your presentation hasn't touched on any of those things. Use variance is especially, are extremely difficult, uh, for us to justify, so. And I think it's worth, sort of for everybody's education point here, the zoning board appeals, we don't create the bylaws in town. These folks do, at town meeting, these bylaws are created at town meeting. We do not have the authority to grant a variance because we think something is a really nice idea. If everybody thinks it's a great idea, you go and you change the bylaw, so everybody agrees that this, this idea ought to be allowed in every one of these lots in this particular district. Um, that's not the case here. Could we grant the variance and just say, yeah, turn a blind eye to the legal requirements and say, yeah, good idea, go ahead and do it? I suppose we could, but it's gonna be appealed in a minute and the appeal was gonna win. You're allowed, by our bylaw, you need ten thousand square feet per, per unit. You don't even have twenty. Technically, you don't even have enough for a, uh, a two-family and you're asking for ten units. I've gotta figure out how to get beyond that. So I, I appreciate all of this, I really do, but help us get beyond that. Not only that, uh, you know, the use has got to be, um, granted without derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. It has to cause hardship, the hardship has to be related to the lot, not personal hardship, not financial hardship associated with you because maybe you can't, you don't have the financial means to complete this, you know, on your own. Somebody came in and had several million dollars to spend, so be it. It has to be something related to the soil conditions, the shape, the topography of the lot. Or what I was asking Ed about, and maybe you can touch on this, is I'd like to know what, what this unit has really been used for in the past in the, in the recent history, because if it's an existing non-conforming dwelling, a special permit can allow for certain similar uses without having to go down the road of a variance. You're not gonna get, I don't think it's ever been used as a ten-unit, ten-minute dwelling. So I wanna hear more about how this, how this particular structure has been used, um, in the past. I don't know, so there I am, I'll throw it out there, we're gonna go all the way back to what this actually says and what we're allowed to do as a.
Sean is gonna answer, you know, our issue about the hardship there, but in the meantime, if I can define, so there's not confusion for others too, there's two, two things in play here, one is a special permit and one is a variance.
Correct.
A special permit.
Variance.
We need one special permit.
The other variance is the pocket park.
I'm not so sure they need the other variance.
For the pocket park, it's, it's for the frontage.
It's for the frontage.
We can't consider the pocket park.
Okay.
Cause it's a donation and we go through the selectmen.
Okay, but, alright, but the, but the.
Let's touch on that for just a second though, because I think he may be right. If, if, if we're not gonna consider that park, they're not changing the frontage. So they don't need a variance to change the frontage, it would be part of the special permit for the use.
Does John say that in the?
He, he says they need an additional variance because they're reducing the frontage. It's our, it's, what it is, it's a non-conforming lot due to the lack of sufficient frontage. You're required to have a hundred and fifty feet, is that right? Uh, a hundred and twenty-five feet in RA. And you have less than that.
Correct.
Um, the proposal was originally deemed by him to be reducing that further. Any modification to a project that reduces the, or increases the non-conformity would require a variance. I'm not so sure you're doing that with this park or not, so, anyway. But the big one is the use variance that is required, along with a special permit, which is a lot easier.
Right, but the special permit and the use variance is two different things, that's all I'm trying, I'm just trying to kinda define that. Breaking them apart so that, understand, the, the, uh, use variance is an allowed use, it's up, it's up to this board to decide in the var, in the variance is for the size of the lot, for the ten thousand square feet.
I mean, it, do you have a question as to the special permit and taking away from the character of the neighborhood?
I'd like to know the, the justification for the use variance.
Okay, the use variance is correct, structure.
You need to meet, none of them have to do with historical integrity of.
Nope, it has to do with structure. And there's case, and there's case law in point that states that given if a structure, given the structure, that it, if it is costly prohibitive to renovate the structure because of the nature of the structure and because of the, um, the, the state of, the current state of the structure right now in order to renovate it, if it's costly prohibitive, that goes to the structure and therefore you can be granted a use variance based on the structure because it is costly prohibitive to fix it. The only other way to fix this building would be to demolish it because there's nobody that is going to sink money into it that they're not gonna get back. You're not gonna sell.
You can't, you can't make this a two-family.
You cannot make it a two-family.
I don't, I don't know that I, I, I.
You know what, I haven't, I haven't thrown numbers around at all, but just to give you an idea, I, that we, we spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars doing just what you've seen right now, which isn't much.
I have no idea what the high-end value market is for two, two-family, three-bedroom units, whether you have septic for it, I, I have no idea. But.
I was based it on, on case law that I, that I found that state that you, if it, if based on the structure it is costly prohibitive to renovate, that is allowed for a variance.
The building which is really deemed historic is a hardship to us, that building is a hardship to that lot.
But, let's talk about a hardship for a second, because costly prohibitive, um, you're saying it's creating a financial hardship which was created by yourself, not by any of the, any other criteria that you need to meet.
No, I'm not, no.
You know, you know this going, you knew it going in.
It's that it's directly costly prohibitive to make it a single family. It is costly prohibitive to make it a two-family. Given the structure and given the fact of the maintenance that it's going to need over time, you're going to need a condo association to pay for the continuing maintenance.
I mean, if I were sitting here today and, and you were requesting something like, listen, I want four residential and I'm gonna have some commercial space, that's not gonna create a tremendous amount of traffic and overload what we already have, what we already are aware of, that, that's a very difficult property to get in and out of at certain times of the day. And I can understand that there are certain conditions that we have to abide by, okay? We, we're not meeting, you know, it's, if there is a hardship, it, it's, it's only financial. It's not based on the soil, topography or, or anything else. Is this overloading, uh, in my opinion? Yes, it would be overloading the area because having, whether it's eight units or ten units, to have another twenty cars there, you know, plus the occasional visitors, you know, uh, to me, that's an overload and, and it is detrimental, I think, to the surrounding neighbors.
So what was the hardship that Nextdoor got in order to receive their variance?
That was pre.
Can't speak to that, I don't know when it happened.
Pre-existing non-conforming use, I believe.
No, that wasn't the case.
No, it wasn't actually.
Just leave, I don't think it belongs to you, Sharon.
So there's precedence for this, uh, the maintenance or the renovation of a historic building? For example, there is precedence, there is case law that states this?
There's precedence for a structure in order to renovate a structure, it being costly prohibitive to renovate a structure, yes.
To be honest with you, as I was looking at, as I was looking at this, I do believe that it isn't a whole lot different than the one case law we look at where, um, they, they needed to build a seawall and they couldn't afford a seawall as a single-family, uh, single-family building, so they did, uh, two-family or whatever. And I would imagine that in Massachusetts in particular, maybe New England, if there ever was going to be a change to granting a variance, it might be for that exact reason that you have an historic building, that in order to save it, it will require more than, than you could possibly get back when you sell the property.
Correct.
Where is that? Can you find that for us? That case law, that example?
Huh? Kirkwood case law?
No, it's not Kirkwood, she's got a different one.
No, it's Kirkwood.
Yeah, but that has to do with the land, so.
It had, it, right, it had to do with the land, it was costly prohibitive for the land, you can use the land or the structure.
So the lot, they're saying the lot could not be used for the purposes for which it was zoned.
Correct.
And you're saying that this lot cannot be used.
I'm saying the structure, cause you're allowed to use the structure or lot or topography.
They weren't saving the structure here.
I understand that, but it says right here.
They wanted to use the lot.
Correct.
For something other than which it was zoned.
Correct.
They used the lot.
Yeah, that's.
Right, and that has to do with the, the topography.
Not the structure.
That one. But you're allowed to do the soil conditions, the shape or the topography. I'm using the structure as the shape in, in order to, to renovate that.
Oh, you're saying that the, the, the land, you're, you're extending the, the, the property to go, uh, three-dimensional upward into the building? That's continued.
Correct.
Well, uh, I guess I'd need to be convinced that, through some economic analysis, that, uh, it's costly prohibitive to renovate this into one or two units.
You could do that.
I don't understand.
They suggested a couple of high-end units. We have a house, a house the same size as this down the street, there's plenty of single-family units that are, you know, on lots the same size. You're telling me this couldn't sell for?
We still, the issue of the ten thousand square foot though, right?
Yeah, it's actually, it doesn't even have enough for two.
Even beyond that, we're still not even by that condition, not able to do two, right?
No, you need a use variance in order to do two.
Correct.
So we have to even compare.
Well, obviously, the issue is to limit the amount of units that are in here, that, that's what everyone's concerned is, so going from ten to two makes a big difference.
But what I'm seeing, the bylaw, it says you need whatever it is, ten thousand square feet per unit. It can't even meet that.
Well, it'll still need a variance.
Correct.
Anything but a single-family, we need a variance.
Right.
I, I just wanted to say for, uh, the people who wanna get more background information on this, there were newspapers in the library from about eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred and then those newspapers were advertisements of what was going on in different buildings in the town. And so if they wanna do the research and go back into these old newspapers, you might find the types of businesses that were in these buildings in different years. I, I can't tell you what was there because I saw that many, many years ago and it was on a disc and now they've remodeled, remodeled the libraries, so I don't know where they are. But that stuff does exist and there are more stuff in here.
Call it microfiche or something?
Yeah.
George is going back, yep.
I just make one, it, it has more to do with the, cause I'm doing, I'm thinking financial numbers in my head because I'm, you know, obviously you need to recoup what you're putting into this. Just as an example, I bought my unit not too very long ago. It's about just almost seven hundred square feet, it's a two-bedroom, one bath, and I paid a hundred thousand dollars for it. So if he sells the seven hundred square feet, units, ten of them, that's a hundred thousand a piece, that's a million dollars. So that's about all you're gonna recoup out of ten units as opposed to putting five units in at two hundred thousand.
But I also say, is there any law that says that you were granted the right to make money on something also?
No. The bylaws are the bylaws.
That's the American way.
Yeah. I was gonna say, isn't that a celebration?
The, the town has, has approved bylaws which allow what you can and can't do in certain districts, that's it.
I still don't see how you're making the structure part of the land and, and, and you need to show me that wording that says a structure can be part of the land, because everything I've ever looked at, a structure is a structure, I don't, the land is a land.
So on the second page of the application, it states, one, there are unique circumstances relative to the soil conditions, shape or topography which specifically affect the land or structures in question. So the soil conditions, the shape and the topography of this structure that we have before us, thirty-four East Main Street, that structure, the building, it's costly prohibitive to renovate. That's where I'm going with it.
The aging, the aging, the aging conditions have structured the handicap.
You're too close to the lot line, there's something structure in play, I've never heard of the structure affecting the use.
Condition, shape, topography which specifically affects the land or the structure. It's the soil, shape or topography that affects the structure, so.
Correct.
Well, it's not affecting the structure. The structure is affecting the land. Yeah, the structure is affecting the structure. So it's not, I.
If the topography affected the structure, maybe it's because there's a sinkhole or something.
To be honest with you, I, I would imagine, and I'm just thinking out loud, if you were denied this variance, you might be able to appeal it because there's gonna be a lot of beautiful old New England buildings that are gonna have to be turned into condos someday just to maintain them as buildings, that's what I'm thinking. There's some really nice buildings around New England that people are gonna be looking at and they're gonna start falling apart and they're gonna need to be maintained and that's, it's cost prohibitive to maintain these beautiful buildings unless they become condos. So I think in the long run, I think in an area where there's old, beautiful historic buildings, someday, maybe not now, but someday, that might become part of what you're talking about.
We could make new case law right now.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you have to, I mean, you have to convince the rest of the board on this, but I, that, you know, I, I can. I, I grew up in Hingham and they have some beautiful old buildings, but there is a lot more money in Hingham to maintain these big old buildings than in Georgetown. And when it becomes a, an issue of tearing it down or allowing somebody to, to break even, make a little bit of money to maintain some historic building in this town.
That's where we are.
I understand, I, so I can totally understand where you're coming from on this, so, but again, you have to convince the rest of the board.
We, we've asked, we asked the Historic Commission, and I don't think there's any debate here, we asked them to deem it as a historic structure. And, and because of the very nature of it, it's your structure, we're, we're kinda strapped with that albatross as far as, nobody wants to tear it down. I mean, they could stop us from six months of it, I mean, that, it's, it's problematic to the, to the land. It's a problematic, it's, it's problematic to that land is ledges, it's a lot of lands.
I, I understand, like, I, you have my sympathy because I wanted to buy that house and I never could have because of what it needed. And I'm glad that you bought it, I, I think it's amazing that you bought it. I just wish that you could rethink your strategy because ten units, to me, is a detriment. It's, it, it affects, it, it's, what's the one with it's municipal, it's not in this part? It's, it, it affects, it, it's, what's the one with it's municipal, it's not in this part of it?
It has to do with the special permit. You're thinking the special permit.
Yeah, it's a, it's a-
But that has to do with the special permit, not the variance.
Right, but I think, I, I wouldn't even agree with a special permit because I don't think adding two roads, it, I think that's a detriment to the neighborhood. I think it's gonna affect the traffic. So it's, it's, it's a detriment to, to mu- the municipal, yeah.
But whether we have two units, hold on, whether we have two units or three units, we still have to get over the use variance hurdle. You're talking about the special permit with detriment to the area. However, we still are gonna have to get over that hurdle, no matter how many units we have, any more than one.
But the hurdle is gonna be a lot lower, the lower number of units.
But what's, you're gonna be, your justification for allowing a use variance for two units as opposed to ten?
A detriment to the neighborhood.
No, no, what she's saying is, I drew a line in the sand that says you can't affect the structure, but what I was really getting at before is I'm not buying that, frankly, that ten units is the only way that somebody could even break in.
So you allow a use variance with my argument for lower units.
You're gonna have to provide case law, specific case law that says that, that the structure can be used. I wanna see it. I'd like to see some analysis from some financial, uh, you know, uh, uh, appraisals or whatever it takes to determine what the current sale profit value is for a square foot of living space that says, you know, ten units is, is, what's it gonna take to get to whatever, you know, cost prohibitive nature? I mean, there's no analysis here to, you're just saying I need ten units because anything else is cost prohibitive. Prove it.
I guess what I'm having a hard time with understanding is, my point would, so my argument, you might buy my argument if it was less units because the use, you already said what I have to prove for my use variance, correct? But you're saying-
For that one element.
For that one element, correct. But you're saying that if I lessen the units, that it might pass. You're saying the threshold would be less, but I'd still, I'd still be making the same argument regardless of the number of units in order to get the use variance, correct?
But it would be less detrimental.
But that detrimental to the area has to do with special permit. That's different.
And variance as well. You can't derogate from the intent purpose of the bylaw on the variance. You're clearly ten units needing a hundred thousand square feet, clearly derogates from the intent purpose of the bylaw.
So it's the board's position that it's just the number of units that's taking away from the detrimental aspect.
I can speak for myself. I do wanna see the ca- more about the case law to better understand your position. I get what you're saying. I agree with mom. I would like to see it. Separate from that, to me, is the number of units. There're separate issues and both need to be satisfied. So I'm not sure that this board is saying, yes, we agree provided it's fewer units. I'm not sure. That's not what I'm saying. I wanna know both.
You would've had a better argument, I think.
But my use argu- my use variance argument would be the same.
It's not.
And that's what I need more information on.
I'm still looking at a detriment.
Okay.
And, you know, it's an overload on, on the-
It's the overload of the municipal. I can't find the darn.
But, but, but before we, just to be honest, where I'm-
Overload of that particular use which would be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Just to be fair, where I'm coming from, I'm not okay.
Derogating from the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance or bylaw.
No, we can read and see, we're looking for forty-eight, ten, that.
It's an overload of the public water or other municipal system so as to unduly subject an area to hazards affecting health, safety or the general welfare.
No, that's not.
That's the, no, that's the one I was looking for though.
Well, as it, as it, as, as parking is, as congestion.
Parking, traffic.
But I need both.
Safety and general welfare.
I need both before answering.
Parking, noise, these are all factors that are part of what we have to look at.
I, again, I don't know if you've even got the board convinced that they're gonna grant you a use variance anyways. Um, but, but clearly from my perspective, the number of units is a, is a, a tripping step for me. I just can't, ten is probably too many. Again, we'll keep, we can keep discussing this, it's fine. Um, but I, I'm, I'm assuming that you're not saying ten because you know we're only gonna give you five. It's not one of those things where you throw, uh, ten, I don't-
I'll tell you, I'll tell you exactly where ten came from. Exactly. You wanna know exactly where ten came from? There's, there's the septic system and, and some, and later I'd like to address it. Somebody had asked to talk about septic. Uh, somebody from the, from the historic, ten units, there's ten bedroom, there's ten bedrooms allowed by the Board of Health on that lot. Okay?
Is that based on a septic plan that you submitted to them or a big protestor?
Approved, separate.
Without, without even, and that's a brand-new system, up to grade, and it kinda answers the other question and, and just so you, when somebody asks all of it, it'll work in there. Georgetown is about a, is, I think, at the, at the risk of being wrong, Georgetown is a hundred and fifty percent higher than the state requires. And the state requires X and Georgetown is decided like a lot of things in Georgetown, a hundred and fifty percent higher.
Septic downtown is a, is a problem, so you need-
So, so, so in fact, the system is, is designed for a hundred and fifty percent. It's designed for fifteen units. Um, so that's the first thing as far as the, the, how it was arrived at. So ten, ten, and if we didn't even go in for a new in regards to hoping we're gonna go for less, no, that's, it was arrived at because of that and hoping the, the ten units, to be honest with you, the extra two units would get more expensive because the zone, the, the Board of Health has already deemed that eight bedrooms are just a repair. That's existing, no discussion, all the variance we need, all of it, typical, 'cause they, a repair is a much easier thing to deal with than, than the septic system. So eight units is like, just, just a repair. Just go in and, I, I don't mean just go in, you know, they, but it's not the same issue as, as going in for a new system. So the ten units has been approved, that's the new system, eight units is a repair.
Are they through ten, ten bedrooms?
So you could have five two-bedroom units.
Everything, everything by the Board of Health is by bedrooms.
Right, and what I'm trying to understand is, did they approve, it's a ten-bedroom house? Or is it ten units with kitchen?
I think it's the same, irrelevant.
Ten, one bedroom units.
It could be a ten-bedroom house. It could be-
It could be two, two five-bedroom apartments. It could be-
It's solely based on, on bedrooms.
Any combination that arrives, it doesn't matter how many apartments.
Really?
But by the size of the tank allows for how many bedrooms.
Just bedrooms. That's just how it is, Sharon. So you can have a twenty thousand square foot house and a two-square-foot ha- two, two thousand square foot house with five bedrooms. They, they have to have the same septic. It's just bedroom.
Even if the kitchen is above the-
Even if you have fifty, if you have five kitchens.
For a fifteen-hundred gallon tank, you can have four bedrooms.
Each with a kitchen.
Yes.
That's it.
Okay.
That maps up four bedrooms.
Fair enough. I get it.
Would, um, it make sense at this time perhaps to consider an informal in case they would like to perhaps withdraw and, uh, come back and present something else or are we getting close to trying to wrap this up with a formal vote?
I'm not entirely sure if it can't be continued in that. I'm not exactly sure even whether there's park, whether there's two access, um, how the parking all lays out here. Is it?
So this is something.
Parking spots. Is, I don't, there's not enough information even for us to, to determine that.
So the thing is, is-
Another set of plans you may have.
Well, but that doesn't matter.
This was part, this was part of something else. I mean, there's, I told you, there's a, there's a conceptual thing.
I know. Stay with the use. I know.
Know what the impact is gonna be.
Yeah, that's true.
So do we don't need more final plan? Like, I would never-
Well, if it's just a use and they're asking for ten units, then that's-
Then it doesn't matter.
Let you decide whether that use is appropriate or not. And from that perspective, Dave's right.
I'm not, I-
We've done it in the past.
I don't feel like I have enough information on the use of the case law.
Well, I don't think anybody's even looked at the floor plan, so nobody, you know.
I've looked at the floor plan. Yeah, that's why I wanted you to address it because-
I actually, it's a terrific plan. Don't, don't screw money.
See, one of, one of the things that, one of the things that we, that we're, I was pretty adamant about is that taking an old structure like that, and David knows this, taking an old structure like that and, and trying to turn it into a multi-family, a three-family, just for the sake of talking, right? You end up, people end up bathrooms and closets. I mean, you know, kicking out this wall a little bit, you know, we'll make the kitchen over here and to be frank with you, in my experience, it looks like hell. And, and I, and I can, I'll use my wife again, I can tell you for sure, wants a new, wants a new bathroom and she wants a new kitchen. She doesn't want something that's, with the floors that go like this. I mean, that, some places, that's beautiful of like the old. But the old isn't always, the old isn't always that nice. And, and if you try to take a structure like that and say, no, we're not gonna take the old down. Wish the building inspector is determined, has to come down anyway. The, the connector in between here, you know, that, that's right there. That, that's all of that stuff that was, that's in there. It's a one-story, um, and you just try and say, and, and you're forced to, well, Alan, if you wanna do anything with that, no, but if you wanna do anything with that, you're only gonna get, again, three in there. And oh, good, so I can just cram in crap 'cause I'm not gonna get much more money for it. That isn't, I don't think, conducive to, to downtown. I don't think that's conducive to the structure. And the other thing that we, that we didn't talk about, the, with the bath, with the, um, I was surprised with people's talk about not knowing what's coming down or going out. There's, there's a room in there, the oldest room in the house has got a fire, heavy fireplace downstairs and upstairs. And there's been an awful lot of, um, consideration, an awful lot of consideration with that is how to build around that so that we can save what we think is a really historically significant fireplace, fireplace down the basement. And, um, this one doesn't have it on it. But what, well, essentially, essentially what we're doing is we're putting in two walls so we can keep that room downstairs. It's down underneath this right here. And, um, so we're actually putting the foundation out here. We're leaving this whole room with inside there, trying to save it. So I don't, I, I, I use, I haven't thrown one in, as I asked earlier, I spent a hundred fifty thousand dollars today just to do it, just to clean it up, just to clean it up. So in order to put in, to do, um, make something that's nice, that's got a ba- you know, got a reasonable bathroom and a reasonable kitchen, that's gonna, that required, thank you. That required the, um, that required putting in this, this, this section right here, which, which is the bathrooms are, are right there, the same, you know, there's the bathroom and kitchens. There's a lot of, there's a lot of money to that. Um, you know what? It's my town, it's your town. I realize you got the regulations to deal with. You can just, you can decide, and everybody here, the neighbors can decide, who's looking out there, what the hell they wanna see in downtown. You know, you wanna see apartments downtown? I mean, people just come in and go in that don't own it. That's not the case. You wanna see places that the bathrooms are built in closets, you know, in closets and stuff like that, so be it. That's what it's gonna be. It's gonna be a remodel job, and I don't mean a hack job. You do the best you can with it, but no matter how much you try and do with it, you can only do so much. You jack the floors up so much, but we can only jack them up so much. They still do this. I guess some people will say that's character. Uh, you know, there's only so much that you can do. That adds significantly to the cost when we try and put this new, this new structure in to tie them together. That adds, that adds a lot to the cost. I don't know whether, my life won't begin or end with this project. I, I really don't. I honestly, I honestly, contrary to whatever anybody wants to believe, I don't make my, my living doing this. I, I like doing this. Um, you know, this is not what I do for a living. I paint bridges, restore the US Capitol. I dig it. I do concrete repairs and structures in Boston, all heavy unions, stuff like that. That's what I do for a living. But, but being a business person, I know that in order to make, to do what I wanna do, which is fixing it up, 'cause I like that. I just enjoy that. And it is downtown. And try and do something nice, then I have to make economic sense out of it. Um, you know, Jeff, he asked about costs. You know, costs, they're, they're, they're easy to obtain. You didn't make me very, you guys can verify them as much as anybody when they're put on paper. But to, to do this here, ten units, I'm estimating, I have to be honest with you, I'm actually afraid of this project because I think it's about, the total project is about, about a million three. And I don't know if it can support it. She just told me, you did a hundred, she just gave me a market survey. A hundred thousand dollars for a unit next door. That makes it even more nervous. So plus, so, I mean, we could just can the project right now and you don't have to worry about, we're looking out the window at, or what we're looking across the street for. And the other, plus the other thing, everybody wants, as in all projects that go through, everyone's piece of, so that, so the, the, uh, housing task force, they want one, or it's cheap for almost nothing. So immediately it isn't ten anymore, it's, it's nine. And, um, so-
Uh, but that's only if you do somebody you-
It was not put in there to say, here's ten. The other day, it was put in because it was ten bedrooms.
If you have anything over ten, I think under ten is more than anything over ten.
Whether it's, whether it's three, whether it's three, it's a two, three bedrooms or the four bedroom, it is a three-family. You know, and by the way, most people have three or four bedrooms, have kids, and there's a car with every one of those kids, an extra car they're working on. And, and most of the, you know, so.
Have, have you thought of anything, I know when we talked at the open house, you had said you maybe had an investor for Bed and Breakfast. I'm guessing that fell apart.
I had, I had an inquiry for Bed and Breakfast. The peo- we had almost four hundred people, five hundred people came through. I think it was five that came through there. And, um, predominantly, I will tell you, that seventy-five percent of the people in town that came through there who said, oh, Bed and Breakfast would be just great. I said, well, get your friends together and do it, 'cause I'm not running Bed and Breakfast. I don't make breakfast to myself.
I'm, I was just curious, 'cause-
But I did have, I had an inquiry.
That's what my heart tells me it should be.
And I would agree with you. And I, and I seriously meant it when I talked to any, whether it said that, then ten people together, I'll be proud of it, you know, but I'm not, I'm just, uh, making flip pancakes and that's not my business. I have a friend that owns four restaurants in Florida. I told him about this socially, he thought, wow. Oh, I didn't admit it, it's a restaurant in a cabin. He said, we'd make a fortune. I said, that, your business, Phil, that's not mine. I don't know that business. The person, it was an inquiry, um, somebody else, somebody that needed, what you don't have is you have no spaces like that in town. No ho- you know, no room spaces at all. And, um, the, the individual or group that had, have requirements for people coming from out of town, you know, parents and relatives coming from out of town, and they, um, have to, they have to send those people off to their competitors, you know, down the country club here and they-
South Jack Swan?
I, yeah, I guess. It sounds close, doesn't it?
You know what? As far as a marketing idea would go, that would, something like that for a bed and breakfast, to draw something like that, you'd have to be married to them.
It's perfect. Well, he, the, so anyways, the individual, it made an inquiry, they, they sought us out for it and then they dropped it cold.
Right. There's probably not enough around here to, other than weddings at the Black Bar.
I think it's perfect for somebody in that situation.
Yeah, which, you know, it's also this, a little antique hub for a lot of people, you know, that do visit. And, you know, with the weddings and things like that and you're close to the coast, but again, that's gotta be somebody who's gonna live there and be married to it.
Right.
And I get it. Not me either.
Not me either.
So, and you know what else? Our, our zoning is also problematic there. Our zoning's got different problems with it, which we don't have to get in that philosophy, but part of it is to have a bed and breakfast in Georgetown, you have to take and, you have to, uh, live in thirty percent of it or something. I'm not moving out of my farm. You have to have thirty percent of it. I think that's what is required, which is really, that's another issue. I mean, those things have to be addressed sometime. 'Cause you've never had anybody successful with anything like that or with a task load. So ten units was, that's how the number was arrived at. Eight units is a lot, eight units, eight units would've been simpler.
It's still a lot.
It's repair, what?
It's still a lot. Eight units is still a lot. I did it. I, you know, I think it is. But that's only my humble opinion. Where are we, Chair?
I, I have no idea.
Well, I, I think there's, you know, we can continue and, uh, I don't think, speaking myself, I'm not ready to, to vote for this project or you're not gonna like the answer, because there's a lot more information that I would need. And I don't so sure we'll, we'll get there, but there is some, some, some zoning and, and regulatory issues that I'd like to, you know, legal issues that I'd like to, I would have to get a better understanding of and that the argument for variance is gonna have to be flushed out a lot more clearly for me. Um, and I have to be convinced that the special permit, I don't think is gonna be a big problem. Number of units would. So, um, forget about the thresholds, the legal thresholds for a minute, ten units to me. I, you know, with the zo- with the zoning regs require ten thousand, I can get, that might be a little bit high in this particular situation, but to go, you know, what, four hundred, five hundred times that almost, um, to me is, is, you know, I can't, I'm not there yet. So, I mean, and I don't wanna speak for anybody else on the board, but, you know, your options would be to, to go back and rethink it a little bit. Either with the continuance, withdraw without prejudice, which means you just draw and come back anytime you want, um, or we could vote, but I I don't know that you're gonna like the answer if we vote tonight. So, but I don't wanna speak for, for everybody else.
Well, if I can, if I can respond to that, I mean, we're, we're, we're talking, you know, um, suggestions that other things would be, would be, would be better and maybe, but I have to take and deal with two things. The suggestions, we can go through it all day long, but we have two issues, I think Sharon talked to him before, there's two issues. One is, 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 uh, do we get, are we gonna be able to get a variance? I mean, I, should I spend plans just to, the exercise of coming back here and, and try and do things if, if in fact you, you don't, you don't wish to go, you know?
Have, have you talked to the town planner at all?
How would I talk to him quite often?
I mean, where, where does, where's the planning board? I mean, I know you haven't met with the planning board, but what is, has he made any suggestions about? I mean, they're the ones that primarily guide the zoning in town and, and all this kinda stuff. So, I mean, have they given any thoughts about how planning would approach this project? have they given any thoughts about how planning would approach this project?
I haven't had those kinda conversations, it, it would probably, again, as I stayed away from planning, I've stayed away from this board too, 'cause I thought it was inappropriate to sit down and, and, uh, say, alright, let's have a working session, what would we like to see here, you know, I mean, I'd rather work like that, say, okay, let's all of us get together, what do we wanna see here for the best of the town? That ain't the way it really works, I don't think.
I'm not gonna give you the board's opinion, but he could, could guide you in a certain direction and.
There's really no other argument for a use variance.
Than curb.
Besides looking outside the box, basically. There isn't. Um, that's why the law is so against variances, because they're so hard to overcome, and because they prohibit so many projects. And everyone I spoke to applauded me in, in what I came up with, and said they've never even been able to come, you know, think that way outside the box, it's impossible.
Well, and flush the argument out a little bit more, honestly, I mean, there's two sentences in here, but I'm not there with that, I mean, you're gonna have to flush it out and, and.
So either flush it out, or we have to go to town meeting and change the zoning.
You could do that.
Right, that's an option.
If he had someone come with a use variance in, what, Five Elm Street? Was it Five Elm Street?
Yeah, it was the.
Uh, that was different, though, because I don't think.
That was a zoning issue.
That, what you could do, what, what they did was they requested that that particular lot be changed from CA to RB.
Right.
I don't know if there's any, there's any existing district in town you could switch that to, that would allow you to do what you want to do.
There's nowhere in town that you can actually do.
Everywhere in town requires ten thousand feet per square foot, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, that.
Well, I mean, the other, the other choices are put in commercial space, and I don't, you know, that's what, and that's what it's been. And I didn't think commercial space was economical, and I didn't necessarily, I, you know, commercial space brings the same issue of traffic and everything else.
Depends on what it is.
Even if we split it, we still have to get over the use variance.
But if, if you're saying that ten thousand, it, it, that ten un, anything less than ten units isn't gonna be economically viable for you, I think you're not gonna, we don't need to get beyond that point, because I don't know that, I'm gonna get comfortable with, with the, with the detriment to the neighborhood with ten units, I, I really do feel for the folks that live there, I think that's gonna be a big hit. Um, so, so that would be another issue, so, you know, you got two, you got, there's all kinds of moving parts here, but, you know, you're right, there's.
Again, but regardless of the number of units, if they're over two, I have, we have to get over the use variance issue, and it's the same, it's gonna be the same argument no matter what the number of units are.
However, if you're not willing to concede on the number of units, it sounds like.
That's what I'm saying.
No, my god, no, we're not.
No, no, wait a minute, I'm saying, we can put bathrooms and closets, we can do that.
I'm fine with that, but my, my thing is, you, you guys keep saying the number of units, and I could come back here and say three units, but my argument for the use variance is gonna be the same, whether or not.
It is not a detriment to the neighborhood at that point.
Okay, so, so, okay, so that's what the issue is, the detriment to the neighborhood, otherwise my use.
Well, it's still.
And, yeah, because ten units overloads.
Yeah, you can't, I, I don't think you can divorce the two issues, I mean, I understand they're, they're separate. The use, absolutely right, we have to get over the use variance.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
However, it seems clear to me from the board that we also need to get over the suggestion of ten units, because my impression from the board is that's just,
Right.
That's not gonna fly.
Right, and I'm totally get.
So if you can't do both, I get that you still have to get over the use, but if you guys are not willing to consider less than ten, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
No, 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 what, what I'm saying is, I get you guys don't want less, but my fear is, so I come back here with three, is it worth even going back and, and revisiting the issue, you know, for him to revisit the issue and think about it? Because the use argument, the use variance is gonna be the same.
Oh, do you think we'd send you back and then still like ding you?
Well, well, I'm.
That's kinda what I'm suggesting, I, I have a sense.
That's what I'm getting, that's what I'm trying to ask.
I understand.
That's what I'm asking, because the use variance issue i- is gonna be the same, and you don't like, you know, you are, you're saying that you don't like my argument, but I'm saying, I understand, it's not great, but that's it.
I understand.
No, you're gonna have to.
Ah, well, you already, well then, as this board often does, you can get sort of an unofficial.
Okay, okay.
Sort of a poll on, on where the board is kinda going, we feel that it's, it's not our obligation, but it's nice, 'cause it's a community, I mean, we all, we're all neighbors.
Yeah, I get it.
I'm willing to think up, I personally am willing to think outside of the box, given what you said, but the argument needs to be flushed out more clearly. And I'm not saying that if you come back with fewer uses and you flush out your argument, that I'll still agree, but at least I'll have, I, I'm like, I'm not willing to do that. I'm not willing to.
We can't agree on a thing.
I know, I know, I, I get it, I get it.
I understand your position, but.
I'm, I'm open to it, provided that you can back it up, that's all.
I mean, I mean, what you have is, this is what you presented, I mean, this is it, I mean, you presented the ten units, um, and these plans, I don't, I don't particularly have any problem with the plans, I think they're great plans, obviously expensive, I mean, but very well done. It's not so much this, although there may be some minor issues of, you know, parking and all that, but a lot of that would be flushed out with site plan approval. It, it comes down to, to that use, what you're asking for is a use of ten units. I would think we, a, a very relatively inexpensive option for you would be to, if you wanna withdraw the application for ten units, and rethink it a little bit, and then flush out a legal brief, if you wanna come back and, and flush out a, a legal brief for uh, the legal justification for variance based on preserving historical structure, doesn't really have a whole lot to do with the soil shape or topography of the lot itself, and present something that you think might be, uh, you know, you, you've got, you, you're basically saying that anything less than ten units is economically infeasible, well, you're gonna have to rethink that. You know, if you're stuck on ten units, I don't think you're gonna get there regardless, so maybe you wanna go rethink it a little bit and say, you know, I don't know.
No, I made the statement economically, if you, five, five, two-bedroom units, there's, you know, there's.
But that's part of the legal argument, that's, that's what you've gotta come up with, right, 'cause it's, the soil condition is shaped, the property of the land, or in this case, maybe the historical significance of the structure, to rebuild it is cost prohibitive in any other use. You're saying any other than ten units, that's what you're saying, anything other than ten units, and that's what, that's what you're arguing. I, I don't, you know, you, you've gotta get comfortable with the fact that it's gonna have to be something less than, what you asked for. I don't, for something.
One other thing, maybe there's other uses.
Or something different, yeah.
One of the things that I'm, that I like people to be comfortable with too, as well, is that that land that's on the side is gonna be used. I don't care if it's a one-bedroom, I don't care if I have a farm stand there that doesn't require zoning, and I have goats there, that land is gonna be used, and it's gonna be used for septic system, and it's gonna be used for parking, because it's, it, it, it's nice, it lends itself to that, you know, you're.
You're talking about the land that abuts thirty, thirty feet, you guys.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, because the other, the other side is three feet from the property line, and it's got one lousy, one really lousy driveway, right next to the tello window, it, it, I mean, you can't use the driveway. You know, all right, you get out so I can get in type of thing, so, so I'm, so no, no matter what occurs there, I think people, just as you're saying, people are gonna get over it, people are gonna realize that next door is gonna be, there's gonna be a septic system dug up, and, and there's gonna be some sort of parking.
I mean, it's true, sometimes you gotta be careful what you ask for, but, but certain commercial or business uses are allowed in that zone, you're allowed.
Are they?
Well, yeah, I mean, you look through, you know, with a special, with a special permit, I mean, you can do certain things in, in RA, right, so, go down through that list.
My, the, but the issue about the commercial, again, I, I, I really thought that that was, I didn't think that was a good use for downtown, and if you look at the commercials in town, you get, you get down next to settlers, that place is about out of business, I mean, you look at the empty storefronts in Georgetown, commercial isn't exactly a flyer in Georgetown. So, I mean, uh, you know.
We understand.
CB Hill did, lived there, the whole house was a showroom, the, the shop was a workshop, um, you know, there's lots of pictures to, to that whole thing, where they did a restoration.
Maybe the watch guy will come back.
So it's.
Actually, I, I think about, there's not, there's not a ton of business uses that are allowed, but.
He couldn't get, he couldn't use it.
You know, you've got some, this is kind of going back to.
Which, yeah, which is unfortunate, and we could do nothing about it.
You would certainly have an argument for the historical use, I mean, if that was, what, what was it used for most recently, I know it's been abandoned for.
It's been abandoned.
It was u, it was used.
For that.
Was it Hill?
The most recent, in, in, most recent, they had a gift shop in there, and they, they, they had showrooms with them.
Like crafts and stuff, wasn't it?
Constance, right, isn't that some Constance?
Yeah, right there.
Well, now, when we first, when we first moved the town again, which was about twenty-five years ago, I believe they were selling furniture.
Furniture?
Yeah.
Was there, was there?
CB Hill, nineteen thirty-nine.
But was it also like a craft? I thought that someone told me that when they were kids, they used to go to craft.
That's what I remember.
It was called a barnyard, they actually had a, like a craft business.
That's probably what I'm thinking of.
Right, and that, and that was Hill, and that's what she did, exactly, but before that, CB Hill manufactured furniture, and they used the whole room for a, for a showroom.
Big, great coffee shop.
They, there was a manufacturer.
That barn?
No, the whole house was used to show.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm dreaming about a nice coffee shop.
Bakery.
So we're coming down.
I don't think your zoning allows for coffee shops.
You get ten minutes till.
Well, if it was a tavern.
Yes, we do, ten minutes.
Okay.
Otherwise, otherwise, I'm ready to vote.
But, um, but I don't think your coffee shop is allowed in there. And, but it's great, 'cause there's plenty of parking there for a coffee shop, instead of using a bank.
Yeah, I mean.
All right, so.
I'd like to, while, while we're still on the record, I'd like to apologize to Mike Dupree for not walking across the street and talking with you. I apologize for that.
So, would you like to withdraw without prejudice?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And rethink it.
He actually say, he needs to.
Oh, you need to say the words.
Well, we can make a motion.
Yeah, well, you're gonna make a motion to allow him to, but he has to ask.
Well, you got, you guys wanna take, take a minute?
Yeah, if you wanna take a minute.
They don't have to take a minute. I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you before, you have ten minutes, so I can still be talk gabbing away?
Yes.
As you say, it's a small town, everybody else, what? People's opinion, individuals, what do you think's gonna end up with that property? I mean, you see it really now, it looks nice in the front, we've got blue tops, fallen red paint off the sides, but barn's about ready to go down if it doesn't get worked, get done down on it, what do you think's gonna end up with that property? If, if I don't do this, or something, would you think it's gonna end up?
I would like you to withdraw without prejudice, and then I'll talk about it.
Okay, I'll be happy to withdraw.
No, 'cause I want, I'd like to do it, not as part of this.
Okay, I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna walk out and say this all over, I wanted to be able to talk about it.
No, I would love, yeah.
I'd like to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Motion to allow the applicant.
A motion to allow the applicant.
I want to make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice for thirty-four, for thirty-four East Main Street.
A second time.
Um, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion, okay. Oh, is there anybody opposed?
We should close, if there's gonna be any more.
Wait, he's gonna sign something, that's an extension of time, hold on.
I just wasn't sure if we talked about it during the hearing, whether it becomes.
That's fine, I, I didn't know which word to come from, anyway, so.
Okay.
Just, this is just a, this is just. I just did this really quick. Okay, so I checked without prejudice, because if I, he just drew, he backed the two years, so you wanna.
No, no, I, I, I was quiet, well, one, I wasn't, not gonna be voted.
Well, so, if, if, but the thing is, if Jeff is a chair, he can sign under our, yeah.
He may not be here next month.
No, Jeff's not here next month.
And you may have to do either, right?
That's permanent.
Sean, maybe.
Yeah, I might be traveling tomorrow.
Oh, you're, it would've been your opportunity to vote.
Well, let's postpone it, let's postpone it, oh, we already postponed it a week, 'cause that's the thing, it's kind of important. Oh, they may not reapply anyways.
That's okay.
Or resubmit.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing for thirty-four East Main Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?